Hello, I'd like to please call to order the Board of Education meeting for March 8th, 2022 at 6:30 PM. If everyone could please rise for our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome all to our first meeting of March. Lots of things going on. First, as Cara reminded me this morning, it is International Women's Day, so celebrating that today. Also, celebrating Women's History Month overall, and March is Reading Month, so lots of, lots of favorites. Also wanted to be cognizant that next week is our two-year anniversary of kind of when, when this all started, when we closed the buildings on March 13th, 2020. So just a shout out and appreciation of thanks for everyone in our school community getting by together for these last two years. We have some very, very special guests, and thank you to our friends at SPAR who, who agreed that they could go up in our agenda so they don't have to stand there for 20 minutes since they're all prepared and looking wonderful. So without further ado, Julian, we're gonna go to the student showcase.
Alright, so today we have our Celine High School Chamber Choir directed by Mr. Briere, and it's just another one of our great programs within our program. So take it away, guys. I'm sorry, Celine High School Chamber Orchestra, clear, clearly.
There we go. Dr. Latch, Board of Education members, thank you so much for having us here. As I said, the Celine High School Chamber Orchestra. We've had a really productive and fun year this year, and I want to thank you so much for all you've done to get us in school and give us everything we needed over the last couple of years to make it work. Thank you so much. It's been so awesome to work with these students over their high school career, and I'm really looking forward to everything we're gonna do for the rest of the year. I just want to highlight a few things that have happened in the orchestra world here in Celine. We started 5th and 6th grade this year as beginners, and we have two about 100-person groups in each grade level. We're really excited, and they're working with myself and Mr. Garrison, who we've welcomed onboard. He's been a dynamic and energetic presence in the orchestra room at the middle school and heritage, and we're really excited to have him. We were able to do our costume concert this year and put on our outfits, masks included. Masks previously had been banned from our costume concerts, so we made an exception this year. We were able to do middle school, high school collaboration concerts. So our 7th grade performed with our symphony orchestra, 9th grade orchestra, and the 8th grade got to perform with the chamber orchestra this year, which was a really fun way to connect the grade levels across the buildings. And we were able to do our masterworks concert with the chamber orchestra and the Celine High School Choirs. This year, we performed Frostiana by Randall Thompson, which is seven poems of Robert Frost set to beautiful orchestral music with the chamber, or so the wind ensemble winds and the chamber orchestra and the full choir. So it was a beautiful work in December. We had MSBOA solo ensemble this year, and all the students in the orchestra that participated in high school solo ensemble medaled, earning either a first division rating or second division rating. And just a quick show of bows, who, who participated in solo ensemble this year? Yeah. Bravo. And we just finished our festival experience. This year, we did that virtually. Each of the high school orchestras recorded three works at various grade levels that we're submitting for adjudication in this next week. And the middle school did the same thing. And we've accomplished so much musically this year, so much to be proud of, but we've got even more. We're gonna do our string fling concert on March 22nd. We're gonna have our May concerts. We're doing a concert on April 6th with the Accidental, so a rock band that's currently out on tour. They just got back from the West Coast. There's a violinist and a cellist in that band. We're really excited to work with them and learn some more about the creative process and songwriting with our instruments. And we'll have our May concerts and graduation. It's hard to believe that's coming up so quick. So I'm so fortunate to work with some of the most intelligent people in Celine area schools. I mean, these are dynamic, awesome, young individuals, and I wanted to know what they thought you should know about orchestra in Celine. And so asking the high school orchestras, I'm gonna paraphrase some answers I got, and I was expecting many things, and they really touched my heart with these answers. So they said, "They feel safe. It's an hour. They know they can show up and make music, and they don't stress about it." They told me, "They feel creative. It's different than the other classes. It's so important." And my favorite one is, "They work hard to sound good." And so I'm gonna transition to that. We're gonna play a form for you, a short work from the John Rutter Suite for Strings. It's called "Aroving." Hope you enjoy.
That's fantastic. I can't think of a better way to start a meeting. Can you come next time? We have lots, we have a rotation going. Excellent. I thought you looked great, but you sound even better. Very, very, very well done. Thank you very much. You are very welcome to stay, or very welcome to go and do homework, and oh, that's right. We, we give lots of A's, so thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, so we're gonna move a little bit backwards. Public comment. A member of the public may address the board briefly for up to three minutes or request to be scheduled on the agenda of a future meeting. Please note that students will be given priority to speak on any topic. The first public, public participation portion of the meeting will be limited to one half hour, 30 minutes normally, and limited to agenda items. A second public participation portion will be offered at the end of the agenda to allow for any other comment. Individuals addressing the board should take into consideration the rules of common courtesy. The public participation portion of the meeting cannot be used to make personal attacks against a board member, district employee, or student. I believe we do not have any student or community stakeholder public comment forms. Is that right? Okay, thanks, Betty. So we are gonna move directly to our extended public comment. SPAR, Celine Parents Against Racism, if you can approach the podium. And Kirsten, if you can toggle, toggle the mic on for the green light?
The green light is already on.
Alright, whenever you are ready to go. And, and just because it's a little bit different with extended public comment, Secretary Jones keeps the, the time for 15 minutes instead of three minutes, and then a minute out, she'll show the yellow card, so you know where you're at in the time if you get to that point.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, thanks.
So like you said, we are SPAR. We're Celine Parents Against Racism. My name's Kirsten Whitside. I'm one of the leaders.
I'm Leah Hogan, and I'm another one of the leaders of the group. Just to kind of frame the conversation today, what we're really here to do is, I think, a couple of things. First is really to introduce SPAR and what it is that we're really working through on behalf of students in the district who are, you know, of color. And really, primarily, our goal is to advocate for the students and families of marginalized communities here, starting with those who are of African descent. But I think that we really want to bring together the voices of people across the spectrum of, you know, intersectional identity. So we're really here to advocate on behalf of the students in the district who, you know, really are experiencing right now, I think, an additional layer of trauma above and beyond what's, what's going on with the pandemic. So we're really wanting to ensure that we create a safe environment for students that is free from racism, and, and that is our, our primary goal.
Yeah, we're a parent-led group, so we're all parents in the district of students that are either, that are of African descent. But like, like Leah was saying, we stand against all, against all acts of bigotry. So whether it's racism, or hate crime, you don't, any type of thing. It's not just, you know, the African students. It's a lot of other things, too. So we just wanna make sure that we point that out, the intersectionality.
So SPAR originally came into being a couple of years ago because, and, and as you remember, Aramadee, as well as Karen Brown, came together and reached out to the district and parents and families across the district to address some of the concerns that families had raised specifically around some of the incidents that were happening in the schools. And really, at that point in time, we put together a list of next steps and action items and things that we would like to see done. And we worked with, at that point, the administration and the board, and with each other, to start to make some progress against these goals. Then, obviously, both Karen and Aramadee moved out of Celine, and the leadership came to rest with both Kirsten and I, as well as Tiffany Alexander and Ashley Baylor, who unfortunately couldn't be here this evening.
Right. So we're on a bit of a hiatus while we're trying to figure out new leadership. We are back. Clearly, we are needed in the schools based on everything we've been hearing. So we just wanna talk about some of our asks. So right now, we wanna talk about our school system. To us, to parents of children who are, are of African descent in the school district, we're in crisis. Our children are hurting. It's really a shame that Celine is one of the best school districts in the state. Great test scores, people come from all over to try to come to school here and learn, but our children can't learn. And our children can't learn because of the environment they've been put into. They can't be educationally sound when they're not feeling supported, when they're feeling intimidated, and when they feel like they always have to watch their backs. You cannot sit there and, and gain knowledge and information when you're sitting there worried about what's gonna happen next to me, who is behind me, who's looking at me, who's saying what. This is a huge problem. And these are lived experiences. This isn't just my story of my children. This isn't just Leah's story of her children, or Tiffany's story of her children. These are the experiences that we've, that we all know of. I mean, we can just talk about Candace speaking up recently again, and the fact that she had to fight to have her voice be heard when she was saying something happened to her. I think says a lot. So like I said, these aren't limited to just one student, one school, one issue. And we know, I did some quick calculations before this, and I could easily think of 20 incidences I know this year from parents I've spoken to. Probably about 10 just from the four of us, plus talking with Candace and working with her on the DEI. And these issues can go from microaggressions, wearing the do-rags, you know, asking people for cards and passes, all the way up to hate crimes and slurs, you know. My daughter was sexually assaulted in a racially charged incident that happened. So these aren't just one-ifs, and these aren't just small incidences, you know, and I really want people to understand the impact and how many happen every single day in all of the schools at the different levels that they have to deal with.
So I think one of the reasons, and I, I wouldn't say that hiring a, a DEI position on a full-time basis is a complete panacea, but I think it would help us to make progress around creating an environment that is a more even playing field for all of the students in the community. And while our focus primarily has been on the diversity side, the equity-inclusion piece is also critical. So we're asking that the district hire someone who would be responsible for creating programming that addresses the educational needs of the staff, the policy needs, so helping to ensure that we have policies that are being evenly applied across the students in, across all the schools, that we have a strategy for educating staff and students and parents to ensure that we can create a safe environment for all the students.
We know strides have been made, have been made. Things are not as stagnant as we're, you know, years ago when we first started, and SPAR first started, but it's just not enough. It's not enough, and it's not very coordinated. We've got equity teams in different schools. We've got the DEIAC. We've got, you know, who, who do you go to when things happen? Who's ultimately responsible for all of this? Who's gonna coordinate all of everything into one big issue? We focus heavily on curriculum right now, and listening sessions, and some education pieces, but that's only one small component to what the DEI person would do and what's needed. Like Leah was talking about, things like retention and plans and a coordinated effort between the entire school district, every school being included, having one person to, to deal with that. And, and for people to take us seriously, for our students to take us seriously when we say we're gonna make these changes and help them. This is a big statement to them, and, and the safety, and, and knowing that they can come to school and feel better.
So part of the value of having a person who is specialized and has education and background in this discipline is that they can bring, and I think, an additional level of skill and awareness and professionalism to creating, and really at the program level, policy and structure and process that will help to create a safer environment for all the students. And, you know, this is something that is, I think, an ongoing trend that we're seeing in different educational environments, at both the secondary, you know, the primary and the post-secondary level. And also, it's becoming very normal in the corporate environment as well. And so, you know, essentially, what we'd like to do is ensure that we have a holistic strategy that addresses, you know, all of the constituencies in the community. And that takes into account the, the needs of the people who are here, and also anticipates the needs of the people who are coming here as well. You know, we have a couple of very large developments that are happening in town, and hopefully that means that we will get some new students in, in town as well. I think that equally important is to make sure that, you know, we have a sense for not only the stories and the anecdotes that, that we are experiencing, but also an understanding of what's at a higher level, if any, differences that we're seeing in the outcomes across different types of student groups. And so I think, you know, I'm, I'm a David, I'm a data person by day, and what I'd like to see is more data that helps me to understand, kind of on a quantitative basis, how the outcomes for students across different intersectional identities differ. Because I feel like, you know, anecdotally, it feels different, but I would like to see that data as well. And that would be, I think, an important part of, of this role.
Yes, we've listed some of the overviews and some of the ideas we have. This isn't new. This is actually something that was presented, some of these were actually presented to Scott when he was here. So this is, some of these are word-for-word wants that we've been asking for, for a while from our community and other communities. Like I said, these are just some examples, like working with the families and, you know, working with other groups within Celine, too, to be comprehensive, communicate. And we'll send this out to all of you at the board, too, so you can take a look at this, and anyone else who wants one. The end of it all is that the DEI position, like, like I said, we're here for SPAR, but we're here for other students, too. And the DEI position would help more than just students that are black in the district. It would help students that are, that are gay in the district. It would help the transgender students. It would help the students that are involved in seclude and restrain. This is something that would help every, this would help the white cisgendered students, you know. This is something that would help every single body, person in this district, and I think that's really important to think about. I'm not asking you just to look out for the, the small amount of children who, who look like my family that are in here, although that's quite important, especially because they are a smaller population and tend to be overlooked. It's gonna help teachers, administration, and all Celine area school staff. Right now, there is burden being put on the staff to know more about DEI than I think that they're prepared to know, or should know, or need to know. This person would be able to be the expert, help the teachers, make sure the training gets done, and just help you in general. It'll also help with the DEIAC that's presenting later on. This is something that the DEI coordinator would work alongside of them, helping them with policies and changes. And like Leah was saying, someone who knows this work, who's done it for a long time, who doesn't have any questions or what-ifs, who really has the experience, that someone that's had the experience that Celine has had needs, right? Because Celine area schools does have a, a reputation out there, unfortunately, right now, that we're all working very hard to fix. And we need to work harder to fix it quicker, but also so that the students that are in school are not harmed still. And that's really the key part. Students are being harmed every single day right now. We just can't keep having that happen. And the other thing is, you know, I've heard no other schools in Washtenaw County have this position right now. That is not a reason not to have one. That's an awesome reason to have one. We can be a leader. We can say, "Look at everything that's happened to us." And that, not only are we saying we're going to do this, but we are. And we can be the people that others look to. You know, right now, I'm also on the, the DEI for the city of Celine. I've got people from Chelsea, Mylan, Dexter coming to me, looking at us for leaders, because we're one of the first groups that have done this in that sort of capacity. Celine area schools should be that same type of leader to everyone else in the county. I've even talked into people at the WISD who love this idea, who wanna help us, who wanna work with us on this. Not only that, but I've spoken to people at different school districts that are in Oakland County that are very similar to our district in makeup and size. And they all have, these are three schools, Birmingham Public Schools, Choi School District, and Royal Oak Schools, all have a DEI professional administrative level position in their schools. And they're all showing, "Is everything fixed and everything better?" No, that takes time. You're always gonna have issues. But they are showing measured results. Their children are doing better. The school districts are thriving. And we want that for our district. We want that for our children. I cannot tell you how many days I have to wake up and force my child to go to school right now, because she is scared, she is uncomfortable, and she does not feel safe. I have to make a choice every day between sending Maya to school and being emotionally harmed potentially, or staying at home and not actually learning. And most of the time, she wins out, because she's not learning anything when she's in school. And I want you guys to think about the other factor that sits. I've got a son, Kaba, who you all know. He will not come visit me in this town. He is so, he's still in therapy right now. And that's another issue of equity. Do you know how expensive therapy is for these students? The only reason they're in therapy is because of what's happened to them in the hallways of the schools that you guys are in charge of. It's, it's not okay for so many reasons. But I want you to really think about the impact, you know? Some of these things happened to Maya long ago, and she's still dealing with them every day. Kaba's been on, and he's doing great, and he's got straight A's, and he still will not visit his mom, because she is in Celine. I have to go out and find him. So it's not just a one-off. It's, it happens all the time in every building to students all, everywhere. And the impact is great, and it lasts forever. And any person of color can tell you, they remember all the times they've been called something, all the times things happened to them, make them feel, attempted to feel less than. These are things we take with us forever. And these students deserve to and should feel safe in these schools and be able to learn.
I don't know if I can top that, so.
That's all we have to say. I appreciate you guys taking the time to talk to us. I will send out the presentations to you, and we would love to sit down, the SPAR leaders, and talk to everyone on the board. We've talked to Steve already. We meet with him regularly about these things, but I would love to sit down and talk with you anytime about going on and more personal stories, and, and see how we can all help and get this to happen together. We all need each other.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you both.
Appreciate, appreciate your presentation. And the two of you, I think, have presented here before, so you know that we don't usually respond to public comment, not because we, we don't have questions or, or support. So. We look forward to, to receiving the presentation. Thank you very much. Moving on to response to public comment, I just had a couple of quick things. I just wanted to thank everybody for the flexibility, especially the students and the staff in the buildings. The, the guidance has been changing rapidly over the past couple of weeks, and, and the feedback this morning was our Foundation for Celine Area Schools meeting. We got to hear from some students there with their experience. Julian shared a little bit from the board table last time, and we hear it's, it's, it's going well, and the, the students and the staff are, are being flexible as they always are in, in these times of COVID. So just wanted to, to thank you for your comments around the changing guidance, and also for the student, and students and the staff being so flexible during this challenging time. The other thing I, I wanted to mention is, we received an email that, that had a very good point in it, I thought. So I just wanted to talk a little bit about public comment and timing on agendas and things like that. So when the county came down with their announcement that they were removing the mandate, we were between board meetings. So it gave Dr. Latch and his team a short window to operationalize what they wanted to propose that they would do for the, to the board. And it was between board meetings, so we were able to take public comment that evening. But as you saw, Dr. Latch had a proposed, a proposed plan ready to go for conversation. Usually, when we have things that are larger decisions, we do try to be cognizant of spreading them out across a couple of agendas so we can get public comment. And we did take more public comment upfront. I remember Susan suggesting that last time. But I thought it was a, a, a good comment when we have big decisions to try to have at least an opportunity for public comment before we come to the presentation. So I thought that that was good feedback to, to think about. And we did have the survey also that was due the day before the board meeting, so we were able to, to read all of that as well. However, at any time, if you have any feedback that you would like to give the board, or the administration, or any of our, our building principles, et cetera, the Let's Talk is, is a really good resource, or our email, of course, as I've said before, is sasboard@celineschools.org. Moving forward, I wanted to pause just for a minute, I think, before we went into approval or revisions on agenda. Michael? Okay. Do you wanna go ahead?
Are we ready?
Yeah.
I just want to adjust the agenda a little. Obviously, we moved the student showcase, but I'd like to ask that we remove 10B, which was a discussion item about establishing Professional Development Advisory Committee. Apparently, it's not ready for prime time yet, so thank you.
Yep. Yep. Thank you very much. So I'd like to please entertain a motion to approve the revised agenda eliminating item 10B, Establishment of Professional Development Advisory Committee, from the agenda. So items may be added or deleted from the meeting agenda, and/or the order of items may be changed at the request of an individual board member or the superintendent. The agendas must be approved before proceeding further. Can I please have a motion to approve the agenda as revised by Vice President McVeigh?
Motion, Gerby.
Thank you, Brad.
Support, Jones.
Thank you. Candace, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Opposed? Hearing non-motion carries 7-0. We will move forward through the student showcase. Thank you very much to the very fine Chamber Orchestra. And we're, scheduled reports, continue to learn plan. And we're at Scheduled Reports, Continue to Learn Plan, and our focus on literacy. Dr. Latch.
And I'd also like to invite up Jen, Caroline, and Kara, who are a part of our Teaching and Learning Team lead. And I'm going to go ahead and kick it off. But first, I'd like to thank the Chamber Orchestra for playing tonight. They did a great job, and SPAR for presenting. It's a good way to start our meeting this evening. We're going to start with the Continue to Learn update. The first part is largely an update on COVID protocols. And then we're going to move into the larger part of the presentation, which is all about literacy. So we have Caroline, Jen, and Kara here to talk about that. So we'll go ahead and start with this part. So as we've been looking at, seven-day totals across Wasana County, these are updated as of today. So we see that, that case count is dropping, which is really good news. And that positivity rate going down to, so the, the conditions in Wasana County, although still in the high transmission phase, are certainly looking better and moving, moving in a better direction. In terms of the chart that we've been showing, or the graph we've been showing from COVID Act Now, you can also see that the trend pattern is moving in a good direction. Now, with that said, yes, we are going to be ready for a potential uptick after spring break. But at this point, we're, we're not seeing that and feeling like the direction certainly is good as to where we're at right now. Okay. I didn't know that I could do that. Whoa, one button.
That's an efficient presentation.
Oh, wait, wait. I didn't mean to do that. It's done. It's over. Okay, we're going to, we're going to back this up here. Okay. Yeah, that was, that was interesting. Uh, yeah. Yeah, why don't we just have it off?
No spoiler alerts. Don't, don't read those slides.
Okay. Okay, so, so the good news is, and I, I did update with District Nurse Karen Herbie. This is the first day in a long, long time we haven't had any positive cases in the district. So if, if, if you look here, we still have two students that are in isolation as they tested positive the previous day on Monday. But I think we can see that the, the trend pattern is, is much improved with hardly any, any cases in the district for both students and staff, so that's certainly positive. Okay, we'll go to the next one here. So the other part that President Stubben alluded to earlier is that the students, the staff, our community have been doing a very good job of working with us on these constantly changing metrics. The CDC has now changed the way in which they're categorizing risk within counties. And ultimately, Michigan in general is in this medium phase now. It used to be where we were looking simply at low, substantial, and then moderate and high. And that was all, and now it's this three-tiered approach that we're looking at. And Michigan, including Wasana County, are in, are in medium, which gives a number of things that you should be considering. So we go to the next one, and the last one related to guidance here. This is directly from the Wasana County Health Department, an updated school guidance. But I think three things are important here. Number one, the current community COVID level, the level of in-school transmission, which is low, and the capacity of schools, facilities, staff, and resources. They're really looking at that as they're providing guidance moving forward. The other thing that they're looking at too is vaccination rate and also hospital capacity. And that's all factoring into some of these new systems on how they're categorizing risk as, as it continues to evolve and as we think it is moving from pandemic towards endemic. So that's, that's the general update, the COVID update. And now we're going to go ahead and fast forward to the literacy side of things.
Appreciate it. Good evening, board. Thanks for having us this evening. We're looking forward to our presentation, as we're really proud of the work that we are doing here in Celine schools, in our buildings, and in our classrooms across three incredibly challenging years. Anna?
Thanks. So our goals this evening, as our part of the presentation, are to really center the broader behavioral and social context as relates to our academic focus areas, to really elevate the qualitative and quantitative data points that we consider when we think about student progress, identify the variety of approaches we take to support student success, and to highlight, of course, next steps. So as we got ready for this presentation, we were really struck by the need to continue to elevate the attention to whole-child needs. Because the pandemic has been ongoing, our students, staff, and families have experienced the pandemic in a variety of different ways. The impacts have been different for all families. And so we continue to hold true to our mission to take care of the whole child. The image on the left is from the new Michigan Integrated Continuous Improvement Process that the state of Michigan is now using for our school improvement and district improvement plans statewide. So we have adopted that, and this is an image that they have used as a part of their programming. But I thought it illustrated our Celine area schools' focus really well, in a nice image too, to think about how we create healthy, safe spaces that are engaged, supportive, and challenging as well. In addition, on the right-hand side, throughout Steve's Continue to Learn presentations, he's continued to bring back the fact that we also want to create, as we move through the pandemic, learning spaces that are rich, engaging, authentic for our students. So bringing back our, our concentration on the compass and reinvigorating that in our classroom. So it really is a both and. When we think about the academic growth of our students, specifically as related to literacy tonight, that it's not happening in a vacuum, that it's really important for us to remember that the pandemic is ongoing. And we're going to really hold tight to the values around whole-child attention and creating enthusiastic and authentic learning spaces for our students.
Good evening. I'm Jen Nelson. I am in a new role this year as a literacy coach and instructional designer. Previously taught in the district for 18 years before being in this position. So while building back during the pandemic has been challenging, there have been some structures that we've had in place in Celine area schools for a long time that we've been able to really hold on to. And I'm going to highlight a few of those here. The first is our best-fit model, also known as Team Time in some buildings or WIN. This is a time in the day for K3 and some four or five students to get targeted literacy instruction based on what they need. Using Akadience data and Fontaine Penel data, we're able to target specifically what students need, whether they need a small group setting with, working with our MTSS coordinators and literacy tutors, whether they need on-grade level support with teachers, or they need to be advanced and work on extension work around literacy. Just this year, we've had 327 students participate in the small group sessions. We're getting support in a small group setting. And we've already had 83 of those students exit needing those services. In addition, we use a workshop framework for our literacy, for our reading and writing curriculum. And this is especially important because a workshop framework allows for short 10 to 15 minutes of explicit instruction and then extended time for students to read and write, while teachers then get to support students in an individual, one-on-one setting or small group setting. This is important too, because that small group setting with the teachers, with students, with other students helps to also develop the social, emotional growth that we know is also needed. This time is also spent working with partners, small groups, students participate in book clubs. Third, if you walk into K8 literacy classrooms in Celine, one thing we pride ourselves is our extensive classroom libraries. This has been something that we've had in place because Celine has valued that and prioritized money for it. The, the Foundation for Celine Area Schools continues to support it, just supporting a new initiative at Woodland Meadows to update their book room this year. They recently supported a granite harvest, updating our, the third grade book club units to be more diverse. PTA's also play a role in this, just highlighting one at Pleasant Ridge this year. They funded a grant for a teacher on graphic novels, where she was using graphic novels to teach phonological awareness to an upper grades classroom. Fourth, we have had and continue to have explicit instruction and phonics happening across the day. So in a K- through classroom, you would have best-fit literacy instruction tailored to your needs, reading instruction, writing instruction, and then also time for phonics. We know that this is critical to have in place and something we've had in place. Lastly, and most importantly, our incredible teaching staff. In my new role, I'm able to be in lots of different classes every day. And so seeing teachers and support staff meet students where they are and create joyful learning experiences that are rich in literacy is one of the most important parts of this presentation. So just keeping those in mind. Kara's going to highlight some structures happening at the secondary level.
At the secondary level, how we think about student success meetings as an integral part of meeting student needs, where staff inside of the building analyze data such as attendance, course grades, and behavioral needs are incidents that have come up to identify students who need supports and then respond accordingly. They're called different things inside of the buildings, but it's an opportunity to really elevate the needs of specific students based on the data they have. The PBIS system, so the Positive Behavior Intervention System, that's in place at our secondary level is a, as a partner somewhat of the MTSS system, but related to behavior, which essentially identifies student patterns and behavioral choices or incidents, and then responds accordingly with positive behavioral supports. At the secondary level, we also have more targeted classes that aren't available at the elementary levels, specified to student needs, whether it be classes that are elevated or advanced, and our academic strategies class to help students who might need more attention to academic skills such as studying or reading textbooks, or even just organizational issues such as organizing binders and keeping units of study in order. Focus group meetings, which are typically held by counselors or staff inside of the buildings with identified groups of students, where they might have social, emotional issues that are getting in the way of being academically successful, because we understand that, again, as I mentioned at the beginning, that those two are in partnership. So to be successful academically, we also have to have really socially, emotionally well students too. And then, of course, at the secondary level, incredible teaching and support staff from our certified teachers, to our paras, to our tutors, who are all providing supports in the moment as they present themselves with the students in a responsive and relevant way.
Hi, Caroline Stow, MTSS Coordinator for the district. Thank you for having us. So my part of the presentation is talking a little bit about some of the quantitative data that we have. We're going to give a snapshot, K8, focused especially on literacy, which is not to say that the other pieces aren't important. We wanted to present this for a couple of reasons. One, because we continue and will continue for a number of years to see an impact of COVID on student, learning, on student progress. Also to show what all the structures that Jen described and Kara described are doing to combat that. So you can see the triangle in the upper right. You know, I don't travel without a triangle. Representing the MTSS model, whether it's for academics or behavioral, social, emotional support. And it really encompasses everything from the tier-one instruction that we described, all the way to special education, EL supports, and intervention. All of that together is what we are kind of focusing on in terms of the outcomes that we'll show. We know that there's been an impact in many different areas, not just literacy. We know at the secondary level, there's been a tremendous impact on social, emotional, behavioral health. But again, this is just kind of a small part. So the first couple slides are going to be presenting Akadience data, K3. So the way to interpret that is I'm going to show the percent of students who are at benchmark for the last several years, at benchmark meaning that they are on track for meeting important literacy goals. So if you don't mind, next slide, Anna. So we'll start with kindergarten. As you can imagine, when the pandemic hit and some students were still learning to read, the impact on them was greater. We can see in the purple color in 2020, 2021 school year, and our kindergartners had some of the hardest time benefiting from virtual instruction and, and were impacted severely by the learning loss with school closures. So our current year is the, the last one. That's kind of that second red color. And so you can see that our students, we are very fortunate. Many of them come to us already with a great foundation for what's to come. And we're really excited that by the middle of the year, we have more than 75% of our students who are still on track. Our goal is at any point in time to have at least 80% of students there, because then we know that our triangle is indeed a triangle. And so we can give that extra support to all the students who need it. So if you don't mind going to the next one, then for each of the younger grades, I'm going to remind us of this progression of foundational skills. When it comes to learning how to read, this isn't the only important piece, but it's certainly a big part of it. So our students in kindergarten are still working on phonemic awareness and phonics, especially hearing and manipulating sounds and words and matching those fluently to letters in order to be able to read. Next slide, we'll talk about first grade. So again, one of the ones that was really impacted last year, so we can see that our entering first graders, that was that purple graph from the kindergarten slide, came in with a lower percentage at benchmark than we've had in recent years. But we're really excited that we have been able to, to grow almost to the level of mid-year last year. And if you click to the next slide, you can see that some of the things we're still working on here are segmenting and fluently applying that letter-sound relationship in phonics in order to read connected text accurately and derive meaning. In second grade, again, we are now seeing over 80% of students being benchmark, which is really wonderful. Not quite to pre-pandemic levels, but we know it's going to take a while to get there. If you click on the next slide, the things we're focusing on here, in addition to basic and advanced phonics patterns, is accuracy and fluency in connected text in order to, again, be able to make sure that they're, they're making meaning out of what they're reading. In the next slide, we'll focus on third grade. So here again, you can see the purple. Last year was really tough to get to that 80%. And so our entering third graders this year were significantly impacted again so far. And yet, we've been able, by mid-year, to have a higher percent of students at benchmark than we were last year, even though the students came in higher. And the last slide for the K3 shows that in third grade, the main focus here is on making sure that our students are really accurate as they leave us in third grade and go into fourth and fifth grade, where the focus is more on reading to learn than learning to read. And so that involves all sorts of different things that our third grade teachers are working on. And if you click on the next slide, we'll go into fourth grade. So in fourth grade, our state assessment that we're using is NWEA. That has a different metric. So there, we're talking in terms of RIT units. The range there is from 100 to 350. So instead of looking at percent of students at benchmark that kind of meet that minimum expectation, we compare our performance to national norms. One thing that's important to note is that the national norms were made in 2020, before the pandemic, and have not been updated. So when we compare how Celine is doing to the national norm, we're not comparing it to the average of students right now who've also experienced the pandemic. I also created these graphs for math, so if you want, you can click on that third bullet point to get those later. Not now. We can do that later. We don't have time. If we had five hours, I could give you a lot more. If you click on the next one. No, nobody has that kind of time. So here, again, we're showing the mean, so the average Celine RIT score over the last six years compared to the national norm in red. And then I just put a star on the pandemic years in case anyone forgot when this thing started. And what you can see here is, obviously, it's a different metric. So first of all, this is a computer-based assessment, so it is not going to be a direct measure of the students' foundational skills or their accuracy, fluency, and things like that. But our students in fourth grade and up are actually performing quite well still on this measure, which is really nice to see. We did not give this in the winter or spring of last year. So if you click on the next one, you can see fifth grade. And if it looks like things are going way up, it's just because I had to change. You'll see, like, this graph goes from 190 to 230. So that's a little deceiving, so just look at within one graph to compare those. But again, we're not in a horrible place this winter compared to where we were before. This isn't even really our lowest score, so that's really nice to see. And if you click on the next one, you can see the pattern in sixth grade is, is similar, and in seventh grade and eighth grade as well. So Anna, if you want to go ahead and click to the next, that's seventh grade and eighth grade. I'll let you have five-second photo op. And so this is my last slide. I wanted to finish on this quote that I find very compelling. And also let you know, I, I remember there was a board member, last time we presented, that asked if we could speak to the impact of COVID on student outcomes beyond Celine. So is that you, Ben? So is that you, Brad? So I did a little research and now some of that data has been published. So I have three slides for you, and you know, I have to click on them now, but where that says COVID impact in the US and worldwide, you can click there. And I tried to just give a snapshot of what I found. And just verbally, what I can tell you is that there's a lot of different estimates and it's super interesting. People are estimating the learning loss in terms of time lost. So some are giving estimates of four to six months of students being behind. Others are estimating it based on lost income of the students over the course of their lives, which is another really interesting way to look at it. The bottom line is that almost every study that I found showed that this pandemic has widened disparities, widened gaps, so that the students who were most negatively affected were those from minority groups. So race was a big factor, from lower income groups, girls more affected than boys. And all of the things that we kind of feared going into this and had a sense would happen, have happened in not just us, which is to say it's more important than ever, as Spar has said, as, as we continue to do, to focus on improving and building on the efficient, equitable and resilient systems that we have. And we've been very excited to already have a foundation there with what Jen and Kara have described and with our partnership with Shannon Washington and what she's been able to do with culturally responsive instruction guiding us there. But I'm really excited with the progress we've made. We know we still have a lot of work ahead.
So just pausing on this slide to use some of the beautiful pictures that Anna's been taking as she visits classrooms and spotlights, does spotlights on teachers. We want to ground this in just the work that's happening every day in the classroom. So while we're happy to share this recent data, it's just, you know, in some cases, two and three weeks old. It's our most recent data and we're happy with the progress students are making. We know that it's because of these experiences that they're getting in the classroom and that there is time for small group instruction, that we're paying attention to social, emotional learning and making time for that, that we have these rich components of literacy happening in classrooms and that we're differentiating. One thing that we noticed is that students need different things. And so the models that we're using allow us to give students what they need. We also want to just anchor that this is not everything. So we get to see a lot in the data. We get to see growth of fluency, comprehension, automaticity. We don't get to see the whole reader and writer. So in talking with teachers and being in classrooms, we're also celebrating other things, like increased stamina, that kids can read and write for longer amounts of time in one sitting, that students are becoming more independent, that partnership and group work skills, the ability to communicate and collaborate are improving, that we have time for creativity and innovation, that we're fostering a true love of reading, that students are getting exposure to new books, genres, authors, and creating identities as readers and writers, that students are taking time to set goals, that we're writing for authentic audiences, and that there's time for project-based learning.
So at our last board meeting, I, when we were doing the debrief on how we were going to use ESSER funds, we talked about some of the pieces we were going to leverage to continue to support our students. And so I wanted to bring those forward in this presentation as well. Of course, continuing our strong programming and existing structures that we've described tonight to continue to build upon the successes that we've had and to keep going, to keep providing the supports as we identify them and supporting our students. To layer individualized supports, to make sure that every student has what they need in order to be successful, to increase mentor and community-oriented time, to address some of the social, emotional wellness needs, and then to target academic summer programming to reach students in a different way outside of the school year based upon the needs that we have identified. So those are from our ESSER presentation.
And at the same time, as we're thinking about how to support students, we're thinking about how to support staff in this as well. So thinking about collaboration that can happen across our teams, been a real highlight to have the teaching and learning team come together from different focus areas and collaborate, but greater collaboration between our MTSS team and our English Language Learner Team, professional development opportunities for staff while still really holding and prioritizing staff wellness, and then thinking about building goals for next year connected to our next steps that we want for students. And that's it.
Thank you so much. I'm sure we have a few questions and comments up here. I really liked on, on the two slides, the one was elementary and had the buttons on it. And then one other one was secondary, and you talked about the talented and dedicated staff. Totally agree, including you all in that and your team as well, of course. Jenny, I, I don't know if you wanna, this is, this is, this is, this is your, your subject matter expertise. So I don't know if you want to go first or, or anybody?
Well, thank you all for coming and for preparing this for us and, and your team too. I know that, that, I think the creation of the teaching and learning team has really just coordinated and accelerated the areas of teaching and learning that directly impacts students daily in the classroom. So giving access to professional development and not just the professional development that happens in an hour after school when people are tired, but the job-embedded professional development that we know is what really impacts change and student learning. So I just wrote down a couple of things. I, I, I really enjoyed the image from MYKIP and thinking about how the academic needs, I think Kara, you said it's both and, like we're not thinking about either or in terms of social, emotional wellness or physical wellness, academic wellness, we're thinking about all of the needs of the whole child. I was also thinking a lot about what Caroline elevated, just that, you know, again, we've heard about the health disparities, we've heard about financial disparities, but hearing about academic disparities and how that could really shift things globally for, for a long time. So seeing how we're responding to that. I have to say, I'm really excited to see the data that shows that we're beyond where we were last year, which shows that we're closing some of those, I, I hate to say gap, but for lack of a better term right now. We're, we're really, we're really providing targeted support for students to allow them to reach their, a higher level of achievement than they were last year. So that's exciting to see. And I wonder, I think there's probably a lot of pieces to that puzzle or that recipe, but being back in school full-time and then also having your team really support in the classroom. I wondered if, if there had been thought to the MYKIP for next year and how the design of that is going to be reflected with the information that you've learned this year. And I know the thing that is a little different than before is we would have like, you know, like you showed years of data, but the data is so different because of the last two years. So how that might impact our goals moving forward.
I'm actually gonna have Kara come up and talk about that. But one thing I did want to point out that you were alluding to, Trustee Miller, is that this teaching and learning team is incredible. We haven't had a team quite like this before. And I think it's because it encompasses so many different staff members that represent so many different students. In other words, we have our special education department on this team, our EL coordinator, Katie O'Keefe, Shannon Washington, our culturally responsive consultant, MTSS, literacy, teaching and learning team lead. It really hasn't come together like this in the past. And so it's really now able to, it's like a powerful team that, that is really out to better support our students and our staff. With that, they can answer all the questions better than I can, so I'm gonna sit down.
No, I, just to build on that, like looking at that graphic from MYKIP, which is, which is a really great visual, but looking at that, you can see representation of, of the teaching and learning team right on that, on that visual. So I think that that's what you're saying, Steve, like we recognize that these are the things, the state, the world recognizes that these are the things that kids need. And Celine is responding to that with that teaching and learning team.
Anna, could you navigate back to that slide, just so that people who might have joined us late? Thank you. Yeah, we're actually really excited about the serendipitous timing of MYKIP and how the change at the state level aligns to our goals as a district and some of the patterns that we've had in place. As you know, in the fall, we just renewed our strategic framework goals. And the MYKIP plan essentially will be using those. We're actually going to shift the language to frames. And the building strategies, which we previously called goals, will help us achieve those strategic frames that we have outlined for the district. And the MYKIP also calls us to really pull together an entire data story. And it's no longer just on state assessments. And so we know that any given test on any given day reflects the social, emotional state of the student on that day and where they're at, maybe possibly what they've eaten, what their family situation is. And so we've known that for a really long time, that one test doesn't illustrate a student's progress or growth. And then it's really looking at the bigger picture and a variety of different data points. And we, again, Caroline said we would have to, need five hours to go through all of them with you tonight. So what MYKIP has asked us to do is really create data stories and pull that data together. So one of the great things about having a whole group of people who are working with the interests of the district and mine from a standpoint of growth is we were able to curate a variety of different data points that are both qualitative and quantitative to consider and bringing those forward to our strategic framework groups, our district leadership and our teaching and learning teams inside of each of the buildings. It's, we are actually in a, a goal renewal year this year. So it's a great time, like I said, very serendipitous for us to bring this data forward, look at it from a variety of different lenses, a variety of different data points, and then allow the building leaders to decide what do their students at that developmental level need next, based upon that data story.
Okay, and one last thing I just want to say is congratulations. I don't want this to be lost, but how many students have been exited this year from intervention? Say it again? Eighty-three, not to be unnoticed. So good work to the team and congratulations to those students and their families.
Yeah, it's funny, I noted the same thing, right? Those eighty-three students and three hundred and twenty-seven, so two hundred and forty more, right? And we'll, we'll be working on that. So I noticed a number of things. I, I, so as you were flipping through the charts, one of the things that I thought I picked up that was important to me was when we looked at our kindergarten COVID number, and then if I looked right, they went to maroon the, the next year in that first grade. And I thought I saw a ten percent like increase there. And if, I don't know if you could flip back to that. And it was bigger than the increases that I thought I had seen in the previous times. And so for me, what that speaks to is the importance of our in-person. We wanted to, we, we prioritized being in person and we thought that that was important. And I think our data demonstrates and shows that from K, right, am I right? Like the, you know, I'm talking about the pink.
Sixty-six percent.
Yeah. Correct. And I thought I saw a ten percent increase.
This is sixty-three. So, but, so, sorry, kudos. There, there were some really interesting trends from the spring of last year to the fall of this year.
Right.
So that wasn't an increase, but it was less of a loss than we usually get. So usually between kindergarten and first grade, we've noticed about a ten percent drop there. And we've had a million discussions on why we think that is. You know, students, if anyone has a kindergarten or has had a kindergarten recently, it's really hard to, they don't really read independently for pleasure in that summer between kindergarten and first grade. So some of those gains are harder to maintain, or maybe yours do, mine didn't. But some of those gains are hard to maintain. Those skills are still very fresh and new. But this is less than we expected. But what's really interesting is between this and the first grade, so sixty-hundred percent benchmark, now going to the, it's like nineteen, nineteen, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, here, seventy-eight percent benchmark. So actually, when we were gonna present this to everybody, I had like three slides on this because it's so interesting. I was really struck by that. Like our second graders came in much higher than we expected on the whole. Again, I can't say enough, this is on the whole. We're trying to say globally about the pandemic. And I thought, well, man, did we just, like, what happened there? Did a lot of those first graders who were struggling move, you know, and it wasn't the case? We actually had a good number of students in function that can send you this lesson. They broke over the summer. I'd like to say that that was because super summer scholars, they can't take credit for it. I think that it was a combination, you know, that's one of those beautiful stories of, I think, everyone really working together. I think Karen said that those first graders were aware of just how big an impact the pandemic was having on them. And I had a first grader who was not a second grader, so I know, I think, I think last summer, I think, was really a turning point for a lot of us realizing what had happened to all of us and what had happened to those young kids. So I give a lot of credit to families, I give a lot of credit to students. But that is really, really cool to see. That's the biggest jump that we've seen at the moment.
No, and I totally agree with that. And that, but that spoke to me. And it all spoke to engagement of our families and wanting to be, right, like noticing that, you know, that, that speaks to the quality of Celine, right, and, and what have you. So I, I appreciate that. And I, you know, literacy is something that I'm, I'm, I, I will use the word obsessed with. Like it, it's just something that between, you know, we, we have to get that right. It, it's just something that we're, for the rest of our students' lives, it, it, it's important, right, to be able to. I want, you know, of course, when they get to me as biology students, you know, like just the terminologies and all the, but I, but I, I really applaud the work being done. You know, there's so much, I would also say that there's so much instructional delivery change that has happened for educators and for, that I think that we've had to be so much more creative. And we had to meet students in different locations. We've had to, you know, and so like I really applaud like our instructional team. I agree with what Dr. Lott was saying about, you know, having our, now having our instructional team be multifaceted has allowed us to, to deal with some of those, if you will, equity and things that are there. Now, I will, having said that, I appreciated the research you shared with me. And boy, now like I'm gonna want to like pay attention now to those equity gaps that we, that you said, you know, could potentially be there due to loss of time, due to loss of income, those types of things. So now like you've given me like a whole nother thing to, to spend my time at night awake about. But I appreciate that. And, but I appreciate that research. So thank you very much for that, okay? And I, I agree that I, that MYKIP is gonna provide more flexibility, I think, to, for us to be able to make changes on the fly and be able to adjust and modify, you know? Before it used to be like locked into goals, whether it was like for a two-year cycle, a three, you know, whatever you wanted your cycles to be. And so I think that that's gonna be a, a big thing. And then I guess a couple of other things that I, you know, I, I said, I'm, I'm so glad that we keep supports in place, not just for our K three students, but for our, for our students K twelve, right? Like literacy is something that does impact our middle school and our, our high school learners. And I spoke to biology and some of those terminology things that are there. And, and I guess the last thing I'll say is I want to give a shout out again to something you said about the Foundation for Celinear Schools. I know that they're, they're, they're meeting and, and supporting our schools. And thank you for classroom libraries and helping our, our teachers and our students mostly to have engaging materials. So anyway, so thank you for this presentation. Like this is so important to me.
Great, yes. I'll echo the, the gratitude for, for all of your work. I have a question that's focused on family engagement. Brad talked a little bit about that, or Trustee Gerby talked a little bit about the importance of family engagement. And I'm thinking about all the great work that's happening in the classroom, the win time and the, you know, all the things that are being done to support students that are, that need additional support. But there are a number of families that we've been hearing from, that I've been personally hearing from, that feel like their children are really struggling. And we're, we're, we see that in the numbers. We see that there's improvement. But there's also, the pandemic has, has had an impact on, on students and, and their performance. And I'm thinking about the, the alignment to family support and, and that communication to families. We know we have the regular parent conferencing times, but I'm just thinking for the additional support that may be needed, that, the communication lines and how we're, how we're incorporating new strategies maybe to, to think about engaging families in, in the learning process as it relates to literacy.
Yeah, thank you for asking that question. I know Caroline can speak more to this as well. Obviously, at the classroom level, you know, teachers are the main communicators to families in terms of how their students are doing, how they're progressing. And we encourage all families to reach out to the classroom teacher to seek extra support or ask questions. In terms of the data shared this evening, as well as into coursework at the secondary level, families are notified of the assessment results. So we did send out some notifications and talked at length about how could we wrap some educational pieces or even resources into that the next time we do the, one of those pushes of data out to families so that when they see the data and there are some questions- So that when they see the data and there are some questions, some of them are preloaded from the systems themselves. But we also see it as a great opportunity to provide resources and to provide connections in a way that we haven't before. We do also have, um, at the secondary level, there's course completion, course grade letters that go out mid-trimester and at the end of the trimester to alert families to their students' successes in addition to the classroom communication. And again, that might be another place for us to layer in some additional, um, resources for families to leverage at home. Um, we've talked about infographics and suggestions at the secondary level related to wellness and the connection to student success, how we can get the parent education piece stronger so they can feel like they have the resources they need and the tools at their fingertips to better support their student on the home front. So it's definitely an area that we can grow in and that we'll look at putting into, I miss anything, putting into practice more extensively in the future. Sure.
Yeah, so, so we've had, um, can I, I'll just start by saying that we can never engage parents and families enough. That we will always be failing basically in that regard, which is to say that we're not trying to do better, but it's never going to be enough. So a couple of things that have happened, um, since the pandemic started, um, we shifted very quickly. We realized very quickly that one of the things that was really tricky, especially for families of students who were struggling in, in some way, that had some extra support, was to have many points of contact in the school. So we really tried to streamline it and have like one or two points of contact at most, especially when we went from virtual to hybrid. It was really hard to keep track. So we tried to share the information about, you know, what the supports were, but then say, say for our EL families, for instance, that your contact is going to be your EL tutor, because they'll be able to translate literally and figuratively everything that, you know, is happening. And that's your one direct line. For the most part, for our students who are receiving intervention outside of special education or outside of EL, we're really trying to make the teacher that contact. And that's for a couple of reasons. One is because it's easier on parents to know there's one email, one contact, one name. But also because if we're really truly working as a team, then we should, I realize, I'm sorry, I'm standing like really close to the microphone. Is that better? Sorry. For the, for the teacher, you know, if we're really working as a team, they will know everything about all of the other supports that are happening. So backtracking to what you first said, which is there's a lot of parents who are very concerned about what's going on with their students. One of the reasons I'm really excited about this opportunity just to speak to, to you, to the public about this is that, um, not all students who look like they're still struggling are at the point where they need intervention now. Some of it is just that now the average first grader looks different than the average first grader did two years ago. And that's not just us. Again, the, you know, the, the data, if you click on those slides about the impact of this in the world and, and the US broadly, it's everywhere. And so I think it's really hard when you have multiple children. You know, you remember when your fifth grader was in first grade and, oh my gosh, they were already reading, you know, pick your chapter book, right? And now this first grader is not. And so part of the discussion I think we need to have is just, um, you know, it, it's going to take time. We will get there, um, but not all first graders are going to need an IEP right now, even though sometimes it feels like we're panicking. I think it's very encouraging. I'm glad that Brad pointed out that, um, some of those summer pieces, I think we are all being responsive. But I too have had a lot of conversation with parents about this is what is going on, this is what we have in place. Here is the, you know, here's the data qualitatively and quantitatively showing that we are meeting those needs of students. I know it's hard not to say close the gap, but we are meeting the needs of students. It's going to take some time. We have talked a lot about different ways to partner with families, to educate them and what other things can be done, you know, at home and where to get the biggest bang for your buck. I actually tried out, um, one of my trainings that I do with all of our brand new MTSS tutors last fall with a couple of parents, just to kind of see, is this too much? Is this enough? And, and I'm tweaking it still and, and I'm really excited, um, in the future to partner more with our EL department and, and with each building to offer more parent-facing information. In the meantime, we do have our SAS, uh, MTSS website, our curriculum website that has a lot of resources. And we have been trying out some new ways of sending some of this information to parents, um, trying to put everything we can on School Messenger. So that's how Cara alluded to, that's how we sent out our Arcadians data with a, a letter explaining it. We tried to be really detailed there. And then, um, right after that, we sent out all of our intervention, uh, letters. So students who were getting reading intervention, they got a letter stating what was the focus, um, what was the tier, what were we going to be doing? And then, um, students who are on, um, IREPs, so not special end plans, but individual reading improvement plans. We also have those read-at-home plans that detail very specific things that can be done to support what's going on at, at school and kind of just elevate the benefits of all of that. So there's a lot of different pieces, but it's still very much work in progress.
Thank you for bringing that up. That was exactly the area that I wanted to ask about too. And, and if I could build on it just a little bit, um, you, you said something about, you know, recognizing that the impact on student, student success will be felt for several years. And I think that that's a very transparent thing to say. And I think we are not unique in this situation. This, this is, this is a global thing. Um, and just us realizing that and us meeting those students where they're at is incredibly important. And, and like Trustee Jones, Secretary Jones said, um, I also hear from a lot of families about what can we do? What can we do at home? But what can we do in the classrooms as well? So, um, whether through the foundation or the PTAs, um, we used to have curriculum nights with, with PTAs, maybe partnering with, with them, particularly in elementary levels, might be something that we could do. Um, we used to have a lot of, um, I had little reading buddies and a lot of folks would volunteer and we'd come in to the schools and sit down and, and read with kids and, and make notes. And the teacher would let, let you know, okay, here's what to look for and here's what you should record and, and how many pages and how many minutes and, and anything you're noticing. Like if we can do more of that and you can provide, um, maybe through news and notes or, or communications to the families, ideas for volunteering and, and really being there in the classrooms and supporting at home for, for those who would like to and those who are able to do that. It's a great thing for grandparents and aunts and uncles and all sorts of guardians and things like that too. That could be really, really beneficial because that impact I think will be seen. And I am very impressed with some of the data that I'm seeing.
Yes, thank you for all that. I would be remiss to say, I was sitting there thinking, just amplifying the admin weeklies that go out with the resources and then for families and some of the flip videos that have been done through our social work and counseling, um, staff members in terms of teaching student, our parents how to respond to, um, social stories that are coming up, behaviors that they might be seeing at home and how to be responsive to that, what, um, to be expecting. And so I love the ideas that you shared and I'm, I'm thinking about the streamline of information because there's such information overload. It's like, how do we get the best information into the hands of our, our families so that they can use it to the best extent possible? So thank you for all of that.
Yeah, absolutely. Small group settings, partners, buddy system, all, all that is great, excellent. Anyone else with comments or questions? We do have a book bike. We have a book vending machine and.
Not nice in snow, but yes.
Book bikes waiting for spring.
Just because I know, um, Caroline, this is something I would love to like, put our brains together on sometime. But I'm also wondering a little bit, like just thinking about that second grade group that showed that growth over the summer. One thing I've been wondering a little bit about, and, uh, I know that your brain has so much knowledge, so this is why I'm asking. We don't have to discuss it here today, but I'm also wondering a little bit about kids who didn't have the same access to materials or to in-person instruction for the last couple of years. And so now they're getting instruction when their development is more mature. And so, um, anecdotally, I'm seeing kids who are catching on to things much quicker and making, um, making leaps because they're hearing things that maybe they would have heard at the end of kindergarten, but now they're hearing it in second grade or they're experiencing, experiencing it in, in second grade in a way that we just couldn't, um, we couldn't do in a virtual setting as, as for the, especially for our youngest learners. So I just, I wonder a little bit too, there's been talk, you know, about kindergarten appropriateness and different countries who start kindergarten at later ages and, um, all of that. So I wonder if that's something that might come out of some of the data and research that's coming out of, um, kids who are experiencing school maybe a year after what they would have experienced before.
Okay, I thi, oh, Susan?
So I guess, um, thank you for your, um, update and presentation. Um, I think this will, this is kind of a turn. I don't know if Steve wants to come up here, um, but I just wanted to, um, make a comment about the earlier comment on public comment from an email that we got with the, um, continue to learn update. So it, just want to clarify that it is a scheduled report. Um, and the board does not, it's a district update, board does not have decision specifically, so like last time. Doesn't make a decision or take action on that. And so, um, I would recommend that any of those concerns and comments be referred to Superintendent Lott and not a response by the board. And then I know Steve, you, you, you gave some, um, uh, some feedback and how you sought the feedback and, um, came to the decision prior to, um, your presentation. So I don't know if you wanted to repeat that part or.
You mean the previous board meeting and the decision to mask or not mask?
I believe that's what President Steben was referring to.
Well, I, I think what President Steben is referring to is that anytime we're making an educated decision on how we should proceed with whatever we're doing in the district, it does take a lot of planning and research. And we were also in that case receiving feedback from, you know, the community through a survey. We were also talking to, uh, parents and families that were communicating via email, phone calls. We were talking to our administrative team, our, our staff. And therefore, um, we needed to put together a plan coming into the board meeting versus hearing public comment and then quickly switching to change the plan that, that probably wouldn't have made sense at the time. So yes, we did have the plan organized ahead of time. Felt that it was really important because we were following, consistently following the Washington County Health Department guidance throughout and will continue to do that. And, and we're not prepared to deviate from that course moving forward. And we also felt that we had a lot of, um, data research and feedback already that we were able to make that educated decision.
Thank you. Yeah, and I think, you know, it's been like that, I think from the beginning, um, with the superintendent, um, making those decisions. And so the process is going to look different from a board taking action and hearing the board, um, the public comment and stuff. It's already, um, been researched, like you said, and, um, so just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
If I can clarify too, I was speaking to agenda setting, whi- which is something that the superintendent and I do together. And, and I think I was commenting on the fact that if there are large topics, whether the board is taking action or it's an operationalized, um, procedural thing, um, I, I think the feedback was, could you s- spread the, the discussion across a couple of different agendas, if possible, um, to allow for public comment?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, moving on to our second scheduled report, DEI AC quarterly report. The team could approach the podium. Welcome, everybody. It might still be on, so if you see a green light, whenever you all are ready to go. There we go. Good evening. My name is Laura Washington and I'm the principal of Celine Middle School and have been the co-chair, along with Shannon Washington of the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Advisory Board since August of 2021. We are here this evening to give you an update on the DEI AC's organizational framework, areas of progress, and offer some future recommendations. So without further ado, I would like to introduce Heather Finch, Lauren Hornberger, and Melissa, Melissa Zaksik. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thanks, Laura. Good evening. I'm Lauren Hornberger. I'm a community member, a member of the DEI AC and also a parent here in, in Celine. I, I really want to start, um, by thanking each of you for the commitment to this work and the commitment to diversity and equity in, in our district. You know, in particular, Secretary Jones, Trustee Estep and, uh, Trustee Miller as well too. They are our liaisons, um, for the group and they have, um, you know, been, you know, super helpful with the work and in their participation too. With the DEI AC work, I think each of us understands that in terms of what we want to achieve in our Celine district, there are many things that we need to do as a community. We need commitment, we need intentionality, and we need courageous leadership. That's something that's really important. And we also wanted to recognize again, the support that we have from, from each of you and from this board. But we also wanted to recognize that there's still a significant amount of work that needs to happen. I think we powerfully heard that already through our, our leadership team. I think we heard that through the work that we need to do to ensure equity post-COVID. But again, we also wanted to show appreciation as, as we kick off the conversation too. So what I'd like to do is start by sharing a bit around strategically what we're doing with the DEI AC. So I'm going to share a little bit about, uh, the policy, the framework we're thinking about, and then turn it over to Melissa and Heather to talk more about, um, what some of our achievements have been and also what some of our recommendations will be in, in the future. So as you know, we, the board formulated our policy in, in April 2021. Um, and this was really important for, for the district. We needed to make sure that we had something in place that foundationally showed the commitment and, and the work that needed to happen within, within the district. Um, our members have evolved, so we brought in some terrific new members, some staff, parents, and most importantly, some terrific students to, to the work. I think what's really important too is we really, through this work and through the things that we have to focus on, we, we do want to really elevate the voices of the students as well. I think that, that is something that we have an opportunity as a, as a committee. Our view of how we propose, how we actually operate this work has evolved as well too, so I'll actually turn to that for the next slide. Um, one thing to share is that this is really an aspiration. This is what we believe an operating model could be for a full DEI, um, work within, within the district. Um, one thing to note that, um, a- again, we think that there's important and an opportunity to really talk about clarity of, um, you know, what the work is, who's responsible for it, what our purpose is, and how we really connect the entire, um, organization. So as you can see, the DEI AC serves as an advisory board for our policy recommendations, implementing board policy, providing feedback and, and doing benchmarking for the district. And how we bring this framework to life is something that we're really starting to work on, think about and, and to get some feedback from, um, you know, from the, the administration and from the board. The action plan and the work that we're doing really hasn't changed. So the focus areas haven't changed since we started this work several years ago. As you can see, these are our five areas of focus, um, and they, they certainly continue. I think what you'll hear from the group when we start to talk about recommendations and where we think the priorities need to be are really in two areas. Um, and that's specific to our DEI structure, systems, policies and practices. And it's also in our recruitment, hiring, development and retention within, within the district. These are really the, the items that support our work. So again, I, I don't think there's any surprises here in terms of, um, you know, how we really evaluate the work and how we make decisions and how we track and measure progress. So the things that, that certainly are, are important to know is that we're guiding, guided by our strategic framework. Um, we, we have a three-year DEI plan, which again, has been, um, evolved over the past several, several years. We have a E-JAT, which is a, a transformation tool that is recognized as important work to use within districts in terms of an overall DEI model. Um, and one thing that I would call out specifically here, which is new, is that we just completed the district perception survey. Um, and so that is, we just got the results from that last, um, really last month for, as the meeting. So we do think that this will really input, um, and provide input into the work as well. So we don't yet have, um, you know, information to share with the board, but that is something that you can look forward to from us in terms of how we incorporate that into, into our plan. So now I'm going to turn it over to Heather, who's going to share a bit more about our areas in progress.
Hi there, my name is Heather Finch. I am a committee member as well as a parent of four in Celine schools. So we wanted to talk about some of the things that have been happening in Celine schools as far as areas of progress. So we want to talk about some of the things that have been happening in Celine schools as far as areas of progress. Um, some of the things that we've been involved in as advisors have been, um, really trying to evaluate some of the policies and things that have come up here through a lens of equity. Uh, things that we've weighed in on have been like the transgender policy, the sex ed for the life skills, children and adults, uh, and the, uh, continue to learn plan that, uh, we all discuss these things together, um, and try and come to a consensus so that we can share that with you guys on how we feel we can best, um, provide guidance. And then, uh, as well, we are working on going through that, uh, that survey. There's a lot of data that we still want to kind of cross-reference and make sure that we're really looking at the whole picture. Um, and then some areas of progress that we're seeing in the district. Uh, one thing that we're really excited about is seeing increased gender neutral bathrooms and changing spaces at both the high school and the middle school, and making those in places that children can get to instead of just having like one location in the high school, which we all know it's really hard for kids to get across that building in their, um, periods between classes. So making sure those are available on every floor, um, really helps provide that equity to the students who need that and staff if they need that. Um, as well as making sure that we're keeping lines of communication open with the city on their DEI efforts. Uh, and, um, inviting communication input from the building level equity teams. Every building here in Celine right now has an equity team. So we've been inviting them in to share stuff with us on how things are going and what they feel that they need to see, um, input on. We're also evaluating the process for restorative justice and handbook guidelines. Uh, and then, uh, we're also making sure that, or, um, the district is also providing community lis- listening sessions. We did the Bridge to Civility, so those are lots of great opportunities for, um, more progress and, um, being able to actually hear what issues are happening so that we can act on those. Uh, one of the things that is, um, one of the things that we're working on here is curriculum in the, um, in the schools. So, uh, as you can see, we've got, um, aligned with the three-year DEI plan, Celine Schools is teaching learning team, added a cur-, uh, culturally responsive instruction consultant, so that Shannon, as you know, and she's, uh, worked really hard to make connections between our existing vision and the mission to culturally responsive teaching and supporting teachers. Um, she's been working really hard on making sure they all have what they need. Um, and then work to educate and inform parents, caregivers, and the community on culturally responsive edu- instruction, which she's been doing through those great learning sessions with the community. Looking forward, we're looking at ways that we can improve how we handle holidays and celebrations. There's been, especially this year, we saw, um, in some of the elementaries especially, there were a lot of inconsistencies between, say, one grade level, but in different buildings, like third grade, or even sometimes even within the same building in the same grade level. Different teachers do different things, or different grades in the same building do different things. And that can be really hard on families when one kid gets to do, you know, dress up for Halloween, but the other kid doesn't. Um, so we wanted to make sure that that was more consistent. And then we also wanted to find ways to be more inclusive without making anyone feel alienated. So I think in the past, we've had some, um, we, we've kind of tried to move away from a lot of the, the more mainstream holidays, but in that way, we've caused some alienation. I think with, um, some families then felt like their holidays weren't able to be celebrated either. Um, so this way, what we've talked about is finding ways to celebrate more holidays instead of less holidays. Um, so that, you know, would include things like Christmas and Halloween and that sort of stuff. Um, so, uh, the other thing we've been talking a lot about is input to the hate speech and harassment policies. We looked at how hard it can be for parents to find this information. Um, because sometimes we say it's a policy, but really it's a handbook thing. Um, and how easy is it for parents to navigate the website to find those things? So we talked about that being really, um, a area of equity that we need to focus on. Um, and making sure that we're commu-, that we're integrating these into discussions more often. We talked a lot about ways where, especially at those transition points into the next building, when like we have those great, uh, transition nights that we've been doing this month, um, that there's a opportunity for more DEI, uh, integration into those where we talk about what's important to our schools. Uh, and then, uh, we also looked at, we're looking at the acceptable use policy, which, uh, goes around technology. And we're kind of looking at how that intersects with hate speech and harassment policies, because there's a lot of overlap within that. Um, so it's kind of, we want to clarify what falls under what. Uh, and we also want to make sure that those policies have really, um, clear, accessible language. Especially we have a tendency to use a lot of like educational jargon, um, or abbreviations and stuff like that. We want to make sure that everything is really easy for families to understand what exactly it says. And then, uh, as we've brought up, we're still reviewing that survey data and we're hoping to have some great recommendations for you from that.
Thanks Heather. That's mine. Hi, everybody. I'm Melissa Zaksik. I'm the parent of two students here in the district. Um, and I do want to echo what Lauren and Heather both said and just applaud the district for the progress that we've made over the last few years. I do think we've come a long way. Um, I am part of a subcommittee of the DEI AC that specifically is focusing on a really, really big bucket, and that's our structure, systems, policies, and practices. Um, and that's, that's been a daunting task for, for our committee, to be perfectly honest. There's a lot that falls underneath that. And so that's a space that we really want to start to dig into more and think about, how can we strategically approach looking at our systems, our policies, and practices? Um, and another big bucket that we've been, um, you know, really had our eye on, on thinking about, how can we add some capacity and, and taking a harder look at is around our recruitment, hiring, development, and retention. Um, those two areas in particular, the systems, policies, and practices, and the recruitment, hiring, development, and, and retention have the potential to have huge impact on our district. Um, there's a lot that falls underneath that, and there's a lot of areas underneath there that, um, we think, just we want to take a close look at and see where can we start to, um, measurably, um, move the needle for us as a district. Um, so in thinking about that, um, echoing what you heard from SPAR earlier this evening, we are also exploring how a DEI dedicated leadership position in our district would be beneficial for us. How would that enable, um, us to take a more comprehensive and strategic approach to the district's DEI work? Um, how can we, you know, how might having a dedicated, um, DEI leader ensure that all of this work that's happening? You saw that slide that Lauren showed, showed earlier with the equity teams and, um, and our committee and, um, all of the different layers and levels. How can we move that work forward in a more coordinated and sustained way? Um, and we really think that having a dedicated DEI leadership position would help the district to do that. Importantly, I, that would really help position our district as, as a leader, to be honest. There are a number of districts in the state that have done it, but none in our county, um, as SPAR pointed out. Um, and it would really demonstrate to our community our commitment to, um, diversity, equity, and inclusion. Um, so some of this scoping work that we're doing around the position is informed by a few things. Um, one, just the scope and scale of the opportunities and challenges that we have as in a district to improve. Um, we've been doing some qualitative interviews with other district, um, DEI leaders in the state of Michigan. So actually just sending out some emails and calls and saying, hey, would you, you know, be willing to share your experience with us? How has it gone for you? What does it look like? What have you needed in order to ensure your success? What challenges should we be thinking about as we consider, um, you know, encouraging the district to move forward with something like this? And one of the most invaluable pieces that we've had is, um, we've had a student working with, um, Ms. Sparks at the high school, um, Katie Schmidt, on a student independent research project that's wrapping up this term, but she is a member of the DEI AC, so that work will continue with us. She's actually been inventorying, inventory, doing an inventory, um, all of the, of all of the district student affinity groups, just putting it all on paper. What are the different affinity groups that we have across the district? What resources do they have? What are their needs? What are they trying to, um, what is kind of the, what are the goals and objectives of their group? That's been really, really helpful to see on paper. Um, she's also been doing some interviews with other, or excuse me, some, um, email outreach to other district DEI leaders in the state. So sending them questions, um, from a student's perspective, asking them some of those things that I talked about around, what does this role look like for you? Why do you, why do you have that position? What has been critical to your success? Things like that. Um, it's been great to have that student voice involved in this work. I think to Lauren's point, um, one of the greatest, uh, components, I think, of our DEI AC is having those student voices on there. So, um, I think that's it for us, but we're going to open up for, for questions. So thanks for your time.
Thank you, everybody who presented and everyone who's on the committee who isn't here tonight, of course, because that's a lot of hard work. Um, I'm going to actually ask a, a first question. If you can throw Lauren's slide up, what that had the, um, the schematic of all of the different groups? Oh, yep. That is like personifies what I was going to ask about because during the SPAR presentation, something that really, really stuck with me was, was the quote, "All of the groups that are trying to do this good work are not very coordinated." And that really stuck with me. Um, and then I looked at this and I, I thought, well, I know, there's a lot of groups. There's, there's city groups, there's school groups, there's student groups, and thank you very much for including those. Um, so my first question is, what are your thoughts about how we all work together? Um, and, and don't kind of cross over each other and work towards similar ends and, and good work?
Maybe what I'll share is, uh, some learnings that, of things that are, are going well. Um, and this would be, if you look at, if you think about, well, first of all, that the Board of Education is setting policy around this. I mean, I think that's really important. I think having, you know, the trustees as part of this in terms of liaison, that's really important. Um, I think from where I sit, I mean, what we can speak to is, is certainly around the DEI AC, but even the work, um, and the coordination between the administrative team. So having Kara now on that has been fantastic. So we now have a mechanism where she's taking those five pillars of work and then working with Steve and the administration around the questions that we have, like, hey, here's things to consider. Here's what we're learning, learning through the benchmarking. So we now have this mechanism of, I think, communication and coordination between what's actually happening in the district. Um, I think another good point, in terms of a starting point at least for us, is that we did, one of the, the points that I did want to make is the equity team and then the student affinity groups or the student groups we have are so incredibly important. Um, and how we might be able to resource them in the right way as well too. So that's certainly something that's on our mind. We did a, um, we, for the first time, we actually came together with our equity teams, um, I guess it was the end of last year, and asked for feedback. So how can, and similar to that, how can we work together? What, what do you need? What are, how, how might we actually, you know, support you in the right way? And that's actually where, where the holiday celebration came out. So there was a lot of interest in getting some consistency within, in, in the district. Um, so that's ways that I think we can, that we've started to do that. Um, I think it's just being really deliberate around these roles. You know, I think as a, as an advisory team, I think we, you know, over the past, you know, six months or so, have really focused on, okay, what really is our role in terms of advisory? What does that mean? How do we have these lines of communication with the, with the district? Um, I think one of the things, again, that we should really be tackling is just this continuing to elevate the student voice and how might, how might that look?
Thank you. I'll, I'll hold my other question, but I wanted to give, give you a little bit of a shout out because on Heather, one of Heather's slides, she talked about the, um, the positive work that's been done that, that you all have seen. And I was at the setup for the polar plunge this morning at, um, at Hornet Stadium. And I was kind of s- standing up on the porch and, and watching, the porch on the other side and watching them get ready. And the guy was there with the water and he's filling it up and I'm like worried about these students who are freezing. Um, and I saw our athletics team down there trying to get everything ready. And one of them, and I think it was Ashley, I've only met her once when she came to the, the, the board meeting, um, to introduce herself, but I think it was her, um, she said, "I need a student to run up to the office right now and get the sign for our gender neutral restroom here on, on the field." And I was just like in the background and she's organizing everything and I thought that that was, um, I thought that was well done. So just wanted to, to plug that. Um, and if that was somebody else in, Ashley, I'm really sorry. But somebody, somebody did that and it was, it was, it was wonderful and it was proactive. It wasn't like somebody that had a checklist. It was, okay, we're, we're, we're moving parts here and that needs to be done. So. Um, who would like to a- ask some questions or have any comments? Yeah, Jenny?
So one question that I've been getting, um, frequently from people in the community is, um, if someone could explain, uh, a little bit about, we, this year we added, um, our DEI consultant. Uh, so Shannon has been a part, an integral part of the work that's been happening in the district. So how would, um, a proposed position, a dedicated administrator of DEI, um, be different than a consultant position? If you could elaborate on that a little bit, that would be helpful.
Yeah, I can, I can take a stab at that. Um, so kind of the, the thinking behind having a dedicated DEI leader is that that position, the scope, would be broader than instruction and curriculum. It would cover things like hiring, recruitment, retention. It would cover things like, um, you know, um, policies and practices. So starting to actually do coordinate all of these efforts. So this is amazing. What's on the screen is tremendous. It is a challenge, right? Though, I mean, uh, sometimes the left hand doesn't know what the right hand is doing and, and COVID has made that really, really difficult. And so how can we make sure that the works that we are all doing, the folks that are contributing in this space, that we're doing that in a way that is collective and collaborative and not duplicative? And that it's working towards measurable, um, outputs and just, and outcomes? And so how do we start to collect data on the, the work that's being done? How do we, how do we answer the question around how many hate speech incidents have there been in our district this year? That's a tough, that's a question that I'm, I'm not sure how to collect. Maybe that data exists, but it's hard to get. Um, what is our target in this space? What is our, you know, our indicator in that space? So really trying to coordinate across the district, all of those pieces. So going beyond instruction, curriculum, and tying it all together. So, Ellen?
Yeah, that's really helpful. I also, uh, just wanted to mention that I really appreciate, um, the mention of the peer districts that we often, um, compare ourselves to in a lot of other areas too. So knowing those three, um, specific districts in Oakland County that are, have a similar makeup to our own district, um, in terms of achievement and, um, all, all the things that, that we look at. So, um, I guess I'm, I'm really interested in, um, hearing more about how we align with them and the work that we're doing. Like, are we, are we on the path that, if there are leaders in this, in this, um, goal, are we on the path? Do they have, do they, for example, do they have a DEI AC? Do they have similar, um, survey mechanisms? Uh, are we doing the work, um, that we know people who've gone ahead of us? And I know, I know at least a couple of those districts work with, um, consultants out of California and, um, at the state level, um, county level. So just curious about where we are, just not, not just that they are peer districts, but are they actually peer districts?
That's a good question that I just frankly can't answer, but I think it's, it's a question that needs to be answered. And so I think in part of scoping out, you know, what could this position or what should this position look like? I think that's something that we'd have to, that needs to be dug into. Um, and, you know, I, I'm going to just speak really frankly. Part of the, the impetus behind, you know, thinking about this proposal is, is bandwidth and capacity. That's a really big question that you asked, right? And the folks on this committee, we're volunteers. We have so much time. We have full-time jobs. We have families like the rest of you. And so our efforts are, are, are sincere and they're genuine, as are all of us in this room, but it is limited. And so we don't have the bandwidth and the capacity to dig into those hard questions and to tie it all together in a way that I think is cohesive and that, um, that we need to do as a district to position ourselves as a leader.
And Melissa, I'm going to piggyback off of something. So, um, we were, uh, work a lot with Shayla Griffith, uh, out of the ISD. And what Shayla will say is, "We are spearheading a lot of this work." Um, that she works with a lot of districts, you know, some that are, are peer districts as well. And she says, "No one is doing it like Celine." And we try to get ahead of it, right? We, we are proactive in a lot of the work that we do. Have we been reactive? Absolutely as well. But we always try and learn from our experiences. And if we talk to Shayla and, and that group from justice leaders, they will say, "We, we are one of the best that she's worked with."
I think, I think if I'm remembering correctly, one of those districts has been in, at least publicly, in a similar situation to us, um, that's been reported in the news. So it would just be interesting to see, I would like to know, I guess, So it would just be interesting to see, I would like to know, I guess, um, what, how, how things have shifted with that, um, with that position? And if they've seen a positive impact? Because I do think that they've had a similar experience and had to be reactive like we did.
Yeah, so I, I'm just going to just build on that point just a little bit. So we, one of the districts that we spoke to did raise that point and they said, you know, what, we are all, including our district, you know, another incident away from being on the front page of CNN or whatever it might be. It's happened to us before. It probably could, may well happen again. And the differentiator is, as a district, having, um, you know, their, in their particular district, they can't speak to our experience. And, and certainly we've done a lot of work, but in their particular district, they have a bit more confidence in knowing that they are prepared to respond to those types of incidents in a very cohesive way and a very thoughtful and deliberate way. Not to say that Celine isn't, but they, you know, they, they're very, you know, this particular district was, you know, they said to us that we can, we're confident in our ability to respond to it. It doesn't mean it's not going to happen. It can happen anywhere to any district. It's just the reality of the world in which we live. But, but they felt more prepared to respond.
I just want to thank everyone on the committee. I don't have any questions. I've been very much a part of and seen the evolution of this since I've been a part of the committee. But want to underscore, double tap Melissa's point about the, these are volunteers that are dedicating so much of their time and, and effort to this work. And just do not have the capacity to do all that could be done. You know, as we think about the vision for this work and what an optimal district would be that really does embed DEI in all that we do at every level and consistently in an aligned way. So I just want to thank you all for the time that you've put into this because there's, there's a clear path outlined for if we were to have a position. For example, somebody stepping into that role would have a, a clear outline, a three-year plan, you know, a really, really great ideas to carry forward that this team doesn't necessarily have the bandwidth to, has the heart, has the, you know, the willingness and, and all of that, but doesn't necessarily have the day-to-day bandwidth to manage the implementation. So I just want to thank you all for your, your work, everyone that's here and, and all those on the committee that couldn't be here.
Yes, I want to second and third what everybody said. Yeah, I appreciate, um, you know, being on the, the DEI Advisory Committee as a board rep and seeing, um, all of the great work that's happening and hearing about what's happening in the district. And as far as the volunteers, um, you know, just looking at this framework, you know, who's getting paid from this? Because you have your student board and all of the student groups, which is even volunteering and, and giving your time. And there's such a commitment to this work. But I mean, I think all, all the members can say that it's emotionally draining and, um, yeah, but it's fulfilling work, right? And so I would like to, you know, SPAR mentioned it earlier and the DEI Advisory Team mentioned that we should have someone in a DEI leadership position. And I totally support that and would love to see that in the district. Shannon Washington has did amazing work in her role and has developed a lot. You know, being part of the DEI Advisory Committee and the work that she's did with the community and the, you know, the, the curriculum piece. But Shannon can't do all of this, right? Especially part-time. And, and so I think having that consult, like her as a, uh, for consulting has been really beneficial and a good start to hopefully some, someday soon, um, hand off this, this important work and get everybody on the same, um, the same team, the same, um, you know, vision and moving that forward for years to come. You know, people are energetic and, you know, want to do this work, but they want to make sure that it, it happens and then in a structured way, right? So thanks again. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I'd like to just, first of all, amplify what everybody else has been saying, too, in terms of thanking all the great people who are volunteering their time, both at the community level, at the student level. And I know that a lot of staff and faculty members are, are volunteering a lot of their time and energy on top of, on top of, you know, a really hard job that they're having to do in the middle of a, of a, of a difficult, a difficult time to be, to be doing all of their, their regular educational duties and, and doing volunteer work on top of that to, to work on all of these building equity teams. And that's, that's a lot of, a lot of difficult and often thankless work that people are, are putting in for something that's, that's really vital for the district. And that does speak to the need for a, a more formal, full-time, permanent role to kind of shepherd all of these, these people and all these different, um, roles in a more, um, in a more formal way. I did want to ask one question and bring up one topic. I don't know if anybody is, is prepared to speak to this or, or not, but bringing up the, the topic of hiring, recruitment and retention. I know that that's been, uh, I think we all know that that's been an, an issue. Hiring and, and especially retaining faculty and staff of, um, from minority groups within the district. And that's obviously got to be something that is on everybody's mind going forward as a priority in order to, to kind of address all of these issues. Because with that representation, uh, we'll, 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 we'll naturally come, we'll help to, to find solutions for some of these issues. So I was wondering if anybody could speak to what we're currently doing in terms of those hiring, recruitment and retention practices? And, and what's, what the roadmap might look like in the future for improving that?
I'll try. I know Mr. Ellis actually has given several presentations in the past about hiring and recruiting within the district. And as you know, we are going to be in hiring season very soon. So I know we have changed the format of the way we've asked our questions, how we've introduced it. I know we're taking a look at places on where we send our notices to. I think that's a really important element. And then in terms of retention, you know, having cohorts of, of teachers that get together, staff that get together and making certain that they are well-supported within our buildings and within the district is going to be really important to all of us in, in retaining our staff. But I do think, like I said in the past, Mr. Ellis has done a nice job. And, and the reality of some of this is just the state of education and where it is right now. Unfortunately, the numbers that we are getting in terms of applications, not just here at Celine, but nationwide. We need people to go into education and love this job as much as we have. And that's going to be super important. Um, on Thursday, actually, I attended the U of M intern interviews. And that was really fantastic because there are some really fantastic recruits that are out there. So I was actively like, "Come to Celine, come apply." And it's absolutely fantastic. And I think for us, I know for me as a building leader, to get out there and, and to tell people why our district is so fantastic is going to be really, really important for us.
And if I could add, I, I do feel that we are making progress in certain areas within the district. Our administrative team is more diverse. Our support staff is more diverse. Teaching is an area that, that we certainly need to work on more. Eighty percent of the teachers in, in the job pool, it's even less now, are white. And therefore, you know, we are going to have to be working on continued strategies to become more diverse in that area, which we are, we are working towards.
Just because of my own experience, I'll just mention that in, um, in, in a neighboring district, they leverage their EA, their Teacher Association, um, to have an affinity group for minority teacher retention. And I have just become more acquainted with that group. I was invited to speak there last week for literacy. And it was, it was a, it was a great experience, but I was invited in only for my portion and then, um, then left because they really protect that space for affinity. But I think that it's interesting, you know, we're talking about bandwidth and capacity with, with who we have currently involved in this. But perhaps if the teaching team is the team that we're really focusing on teacher retention, minority teacher retention and recruitment, perhaps leveraging that group the way others have would be, um, would be helpful. Just an idea.
In terms of potentially our own students from, is that referred to?
No, it's a minority teacher retention group. So it's, it's a group run by the, by the Education Association, an affinity group to support teachers and their development in a space that is, is safe for them.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can say that that's actually something that Shannon is leading up right now, working with our staff to, to talk through a fair amount of that. The other idea that we have discussed is the possibility of our own students in terms of, of saying that, you know, as they graduate from Celine, consideration to come back and, and, and teach here. And, and what, what that would take to, to make sure that they could, you know, get involved in education, potentially be a teacher and then come back to Celine and teach is, is a strategy too as well.
Great. Yeah, Susan?
I just want to, I guess, um, make sure that, and, and I don't think the DEIAC does this, but checking off boxes. Let's, uh, you know, I hope it doesn't become that like, oh, yep, we done this. It's, it's continuous, right? It's those best practices. It's, you know, I mean, it's just constant. And so, so I, I don't think we should necessarily, you know, frame things or discontinue looking at areas just because we've done something once. You know, I think, you know, reviewing that and continuing to make sure that it is happening. Those, or if there is, you know, new, new ideas or guidance of how to do things, to make sure that we're always listening and, and communicating that and respecting that as well. So.
I guess what I would say is like, I'm hearing just having an intentional focus, right? About the work we want to do and what, how we want to support our students, how we want to support our staff as far as diversity, right, and equity and, and being inclusive of others and what have you. I, I hear that, like, just being intentional about it and being continuously mindful, right? In our structures, in our team building and, and the things that we do. So I, I, I haven't had a chance, I wanted to applaud, thank you. Like, I, I, I hear you about, this is, this is free work and it's a, it's, it's, you know, intentional work that is being done on behalf of our students, right? Like, at the end of the day, like, that's really where, where we place our, our emphasis. And so, like, that's what I hear is intent, 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 just being constantly mindful.
All right. Seeing no other questions or comments, thank you very much. Obviously, you're welcome to stay. Or if you have other things that you need to do, I know you've dedicated a lot of time already. Thank you. I wanted to just check with our team up here if we needed a 10-minute recess because we're about two hours in. Okay. Um, I'd like to please entertain a motion for a 10-minute recess. So moved. So moved. Miller? All right, Jenny, thank you. Second?
Second.
Susan, thank you. Um, we are adjourned until eight forty-five. Susan, thank you. Um, we are adjourned until, um, eight forty-five.
Yeah, today, and it's like a video or whatever, like, the teachers did like a video to go with it. And so the kids have been hearing it now for a week. And on my way home today, like, half an hour after school gets out, and two families were walking to the park, and I stopped, and I was like waving to them, and they were like jumping and dancing, so I rolled down the window, and they were like, this is it, we just took a party. And they're like dancing and singing, and I was like, oh my gosh. I'm gonna just take this moment into my heart forever. I mean, it could be. Right, right. I mean, I know, yeah, 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 exactly. I know, like, like when I give my D back on dance, like, well, some of the kids that are like doing this and this, and they're like, um, mom? No, I took dance class until second grade. So Wes, Wes, I always say Wes and Drew are a lot of like, Wes is kind of a good pack at most things. So if you're like, hey, we know this is being called pickleball, come and play, they'll like win the first time. And I'm gonna be like, uh, what? Yeah, no, no, yeah, no, no. Yeah, no, it's not me. And the girls have to work harder than Drew. Like, I always say, Drew's a good guy for a pickup game. For him to like really accelerate in an area, he has to, um, you know, work at it. But, yeah, so he just missed state by three spots per dive. And he just found out right before I left that one of the kids who qualified just got, so. Got, uh, yes, got expelled by a school for being drunk at the movie theater. Detroit traffic's in trouble. So he was like, so it was two spots instead of three, like, yeah. And the other thing that's really coming to is there was, um, a girl diving with him from Powell, because she plays a different sport, so Title IX, she can be on the boys' team. So she was diving against them, and at first he was like, and I was like, beat her.
All right, one minute till the break is over.
Work harder. And by the way, you dived, you dived against girls all summer long, so what's the difference? And I was like, do you wanna be on the girls' dive team in the fall? You can. He's like.
Oh.
Oh, that's right, that's right, that's right.
Oh.
Yay, yay.
She gets to vote.
Okay.
All right, welcome back. Eight forty-five. That is exactly ten minutes. Um, moving on to our action items for this evening. Item A, please, I'd like to recommend a motion to approve school of choice for the twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three school year as recommended by Superintendent Latch.
So moved, McVeigh.
Thank you, Michael. Second?
I guess it's not happening this year.
I, I think it's important to happen. Second, Gerbi.
Okay, thank you, Braya. Um, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Uh, vote for the motion, then discussion.
No. We moved, and then we discussed, and then we vote.
Yes, yes, yes. Okay, thank you. Um, Dr. Latch, it's eight-thirty, I'm tired, right?
Okay, so we are discussing, well, we discussed last time, a strategy around school of choice. And I'll kind of refresh our conversation, which was, um, the number of students, the minimum openings that we have, and you should all have this in your packet, is, um, more or less ten at every grade level, with the exception of at sixth grade and ninth grade. Sixth grade and ninth grade tend to be transitional times where more people are coming into the district anyway, for a variety of reasons, so that we would, um, ramp up the number of offerings or openings at those levels. And, uh, with, with this idea, well, it's not really an idea, and we're gonna talk about, Trusty Hayward has put together some data that shows us that we, there, there is some enrollment loss. A lot of it is now taking shape at the middle and high school level, uh, largely because there has been this ten-year trend in Celine and all the districts across Washtenaw County, with the exception of Ann Arbor showing some growth. But all the other districts are, um, declining in enrollment. And, um, therefore, to recapture some of that at the sixth, ninth, and, you know, middle and high school level seems to make more sense at this time as we put together the school of choice guidelines. But I, so I do wanna go to look at the enrollment data. Uh, Trusty Hayward put together some talking points. I just wanna, I wanna read some, some of those because he's a statistician. And this is, um, data that you can pull off from the Census Bureau, also from a site, MySchoolData. It's a, it's a good comparison site for different school districts across Michigan. And, um, Census Bureau data substantiates that there's been a decline in the school age, five to seven, seventeen-year-old population, both statewide and within Washtenaw County over the last decade. But the statewide data trend is a loss of nine-point-six percent of school age population over a ten-year trend from two thousand ten to two thousand nineteen and twenty, whereas Celine area schools is two-point-five percent loss. So this is showing that, yep, across the state, we're losing school age population. The Washtenaw County average is a loss of five-point-two percent. Again, Celine area schools is minus two-point-five percent. Um, Dexter's doing a little better than that at minus point-two percent. And then Ann Arbor has gained some in enrollment, um, over, over that period. It's the only district that has. However, if you also look at what's happened in the last two years, this is over the course of the pandemic, all districts have lost enrollment, including Ann Arbor. So, and again, Celine has been losing enrollment at a lesser pace than most of the districts outside of Ann Arbor and to some degree Dexter. So I just wanted to put that in comparison, that there is this loss occurring and has been occurring for some time. So when we start talking about school of choice, we start talking about, well, our losses are occurring now because it's been building more at the secondary level. So as we continue to right-size the district as it relates to staffing, and for example, if we have, over the course of the last, um, several years, been losing enrollment at the high school level, it may warrant that we would have less staff at the high school, less teachers. Uh, but we would do that by attrition, meaning, um, as people retire or exit the district, there isn't gonna be the need to be laying off, uh, staff. Uh, we're simply going to adjust the staffing model accordingly. And that will make more fiscal sense, it will make, um, uh, you know, a better operation moving forward to make the adjustments we need to, to, to keep the structure of the district, uh, right-sized. And school of choice strategy is shifting slightly too. So that's what, um, we're asking for as it comes to approval for school of choice moving forward.
Great. Really nice graph, David, thank you. Susan?
So, um, as far as like, and I don't know, I don't remember if you addressed this last time, um, but how this may impact, um, teachers, staff, capacity, and, um, class size, that kind of thing. Do you just figure that out after school of choice and the numbers?
Yeah, that, that's a good question. So what we end up doing is we, we actually look at, um, the numbers often before we're actually going through the, sort of this final process of how many students we can actually take. I'll just, I'll give you an example. Like, let's say we have a minimum opening of ten at the second grade level. But we may say, well, if we were to take fifteen students, for example, and place five of them at the different elementary schools, Pleasant Ridge, Woodland Meadows, and Harvest, that actually would still keep class sizes low or within our range. And then, you know, that, then that would be, you know, additional revenue for the school district. So we may, we may say that fifteen makes more sense than just taking the minimum of ten. So we will make all those decisions, and that's a meeting that Assistant Superintendent Ellis, Ellis will run with our administrative team to sort of sort out where it makes the most sense to be adding and how we balance that. And then often, we don't place students until later in the summer, so we make sure we're accounting for residents who are moving in so that there's not gonna be some overload in a specific grade level at a specific building. And that, that's a little, it's nuanced, it's sort of a, it's not an exact science, but that's what we work to do each, um, spring and summer.
Thank you.
Um, just looking at the, at the packet and seeing the numbers, it, it signifies that those are minimum numbers. So I think that, um, this may just be something that has worked out in the wash. But you mentioned, um, that most of our, um, losses occurring, or I, I guess not loss, but most of our numbers have declined for a variety of reasons at the secondary level. So would it make sense for us to increase our minimum number of openings at the secondary level? I know you mentioned that at sixth grade and ninth grade, we often see an influx. But on the minimum openings, would it make sense to increase ninth, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth in anticipation of those, um, class sizes being smaller ahead of time?
Um, I mean, we could, we could do that, but by just saying the minimum means we always can take more. And it seems like the, the strategy here is to signify that by taking more at sixth and ninth, it, it is sometimes deemed as more encouraging for families to apply when they see that there are more slots. But I think this strategy seems would make more sense at this point in time because those are transitional grades. And, um, traditionally, that's where a lot of people are looking to move their kids, which kind of makes sense. You know, you start middle school, sixth grade, or you start high school in ninth grade. So, um, trying to really focus more at those levels with the idea that we, you're right, we may want to take sixteen eleventh graders if, if, if we felt that that was the right thing to do based on, uh, class size and enrollment, that kind of thing.
And is that rationale the reason why there's only one minimum for twelfth grade? That we just don't get as many seniors asking to transfer?
Well, yes and no. We also don't feel like it's the right thing to do to say that students are just gonna move in to have a Celine, like, not really have gone through the program and just move for twelfth grade. That doesn't seem like that would be the right thing to do for a variety of reasons there, to just have that diploma, um, get that, that, sort of the last year like that. But, but then again, we would have to see how many apply, and we might have to see what the reasons are too. Sometimes, uh, you know, families have reasons upon which they're doing that, and we, we often work with that too.
Okay. I just, I was thinking about programming and my desire to, to maintain the programming that we're so proud of at, at our secondary levels, and wondering if, if that could, could be. But I, I do appreciate that it's a minimum, so, um, that could be flexible.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, seeing none. Now we can vote. Apologies. Um, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries, seven-zero. Um, moving on to action item B, I'd like to please entertain a motion to approve the purchase and installation of the InformaCast notification system at Celine High School in the amount of three hundred nine thousand five hundred and thirty-seven dollars from Innacom Technical Services Group, LLC, as recommended by Director of Technology, Jay Grossman.
I'll make the motion. Gerbi?
Thank you, Brad. Second, Miller?
Thank you, Jenny. Um, discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to actually call up Jay, cause he's, he stayed for our meeting. And he can talk a little bit about the direction of the district as it relates to technology, making sure systems work together, and, uh, security. And he's been working hard on that, so.
I will try and keep this brief, cause we've all been here pretty late, so I appreciate that. Um, basically, two years ago, we began piloting the InformaCast emergency notification system at Pleasant Ridge. Uh, now that we've finished that system, worked out all the bugs, gotten the pieces, gotten our blueprint together, we've, um, after talking with our capital projects committee, we decided we would like to pivot that now and begin the next project, which would be taking on the high school. Um, so this system, in addition to, uh, providing notifications, it would give us audio and visual, uh, notification in the event of an emergency such as active shooter, tornado, inclement weather. Um, it'll also help us replace our aging, uh, PA and bell system in that building. So it'll kind of be, uh, multiple birds with one stone. And really provide that safety and security when there is an actual event in the building to, uh, to provide direction and safety, uh, for our students and staff to get them in a location. Uh, do you guys have any questions? I provided the, the brochure. Happy to answer anything you have about the system.
Tell me, um, just a little bit about the panic button that I saw throughout the brochures. What does it signal? I mean, it doesn't evacuate the school.
Sure. So the panic button shown there is an example. We do have a panic button in all of our buildings that is, um, at the desk. So if there is a, an active event, they would press that button. That button itself would trigger the system to not only work with our fire doors to lock the doors, but it would then also trigger strobes, uh, sirens, notifications, scrolling messages throughout the building.
So that's in a secure spot or, uh, within reach of an adult? It's not out in an area? Okay, got it.
That button itself is, the system can also be activated by, um, an app on a cell phone that would be given to a trusted adult or from phones that is password-protected.
Thank you.
It's funny, Vice President McVeigh would bring that up, because, uh, we, we've actually talked about this system uh, through the finance committee. It's a significant financial budget item. And so, uh, we, we, we kind of vetted it with, with Mr. Grossman. We appreciated him answering questions just like, like that one and what have you. And, uh, there's some stuff from a financing standpoint that I wanna point out from this that really, that gives me a lot of, um, good feeling about it. For example, there are grants that are available. We can apply for every single one of our buildings to receive a fifty-thousand-dollar grant, seven buildings. We could be eligible for up to three hundred and fifty dollars in realization towards this program. And so that's something that I think is good. I think we all know the importance of emergency and safety. And I hate to say that we're living a world where we're hyper alert, but we are, you know? Teachers go through intense Alice trainings and those kinds of things. So there's that, uh, you know, some of this money is supported by bond, you know, series three money. And some of this is, and there's also like a process we go through that we were talking about with regards to the R E M C involving like technology and wiring, and it's competitively bid. And so like, I really do feel confident, like, from a finance standpoint, you know, giving this quote-unquote, the finance committee is like stamp of approval on it. So I just wanted to speak to that, and I want So I just wanted to speak to that. And I want to thank you for your time and spending time with us at the finance committee today.
It's my pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you for that validation there. Treasurer Gerbi?
We're not the only ones. I will speak that out too. We're not the only ones. Chelsea, who said is, is doing it now. And a number of the district, we want to get in front because a number of districts, I think, are going to try to be competitive for this particular software device, whatever you want to call it, InformaCast.
This is something we've been bringing up in the, the directors' meetings throughout the county as well. There are other districts in the county even, like I mentioned, Chelsea is among, and some others are looking at the same system as well.
If I could just add one more thing. When we say the word bandwidth here at the table, please be careful. He gets very edgy.
What are we doing? Talking about technology? It's not my turn yet. Thank you.
So did you look at other, I don't know if this is like the number one system? Or are there other ones out there? And how did you decide on this?
Good question. So there are other systems out there. I haven't found one that is this comprehensive that not only offers alerts, which I've found other systems that do, but this also, not only does text alerts, but also works with signage. It incorporates with the Rise Vision program that we're bringing in for digital signage in the buildings. This came as a result, like I said, two years ago, we started a pilot program where we had seen other districts where this was brought up to. And we've taken a couple of visits to other districts that already had this in place. Some of it was before I started in the district. I was part of the visit with some of the directors to go visit Lenawee ISD who had this in place. And as we saw how they integrated it, it solidified that we wanted to try it at Pleasant Ridge. With the success we've had there over the past couple of months, especially showing this to our admin meetings last month, we wanted to try and continue this, like I said, throughout the rest of the district.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask for Jennifer for an assist here. You spoke to something through the foundation that also had a link to this particular program, correct? This system?
Yeah. And Karen and Steve could, could add on anything, but obviously the foundation for Celine Area Schools looks for a lot of grant opportunities at both the building and the staff level. And it's been discussed what they could do to support televisions and monitors that could be used in this as well.
Yes, the system we're looking at, that the foundation has helped bring in at the middle school, looking to bring that at the high school, specifically choosing that system because it does integrate successfully with the InformaCast. And we have that in the trial at Pleasant Ridge. So we were able to watch that work when the lockdown was initiated, takes over the televisions and also broadcasts on those, in addition to the clocks, the strobes, and the speakers throughout the building.
Departments working together.
I, I really want to just recognize in looking through this that there are pieces of this that exist in places, but not anything that is this well-developed and, and working systems across systems. I appreciate that because of the, the most recent bond, the Safe Warm and Dry, that our buildings are equipped with the necessary physical features that are needed to, to make a system like this worthwhile. So you mentioned the fire doors and the fact that with a hit of one button, our hallways are secured with those fire doors. And just knowing that, that a system like this is going to create an additional layer of safety while having those pieces all work together, as I was looking through the brochure, was just really impressive.
It really ties them all together. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other comments, we will move to vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Jay.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming to finance too. I know you've been here a long time today. Moving on to action item C, please. I'd like to please entertain a motion to adopt the proposed 2021-2022 general fund budget amendment as submitted by Assistant Superintendent Owesley. So moved, Jones. Thank you. Candace?
Second, Miller.
Thank you, Jenny. Miranda, would you like to say a few words?
So I just wanted to take a quick moment to, in general, this was the part that was in the packet. And just point out a couple of different things that we're looking at on major things that we looked at all the way back in June, before the state passed their budget and things like that. Where there's a lot more knowns in this year and just trying to get a really good update, even though we will be coming right back in shortly in June, it will be very quickly to do final amendments and go on to the next year. But some of the key points in, in looking at this March amendment, one is the student count that we are back now to the 90-10, you know, reversed. Or last year, we kind of got into the super blend, so we're back to that 90% of the fall count and 10% of the spring count. And we had predicted in June that we'd be around 5,000. And we really came in at 4,900 for that blend. So that was a lower than we expected. But in the same, in the reverse, the foundation increased. We set at $163 per student, and it came in at 404, bringing us up to 8,700 per student. So it kind of offset, we were low on students, but we were also lower on our, on what we would get. So another large piece that was very different in this year is something called the U A A L. It's a state part that they give us in revenue, and we turn around and expend it on the other side in every one of our salary accounts. So one of the things is that inflates our total budget because it's on both sides, our revenue side and also our expenditure side. And that was a million dollar increase from last year. So our revenues on the state sources went up a million. And then throughout every single one of those departments, it went up exactly equal. So it didn't change our bottom line at all, but it also changed our number significantly. And that was a big change in this year that we saw. There are, there is one-time funding. So you'll notice the state or federal sources did jump up. But at the same time, on the, the expenditure side, there's also expenditures that are one-time, expenditures that will also come off in the future. So we did a COVID rigor salary statement that that was something that's a one-time thing that will not be reoccurring as well. So then a lot of updates, a lot of different staffing moves this year has been a lot of different things as much as we heard of all the education things changing, the same thing that money follows all of those changes throughout. And staffing's been a difficult thing. And subbing has been also a difficult thing. Lots of those different parts look very different. So on top of the updating staffing models, we also in January just settled agreements, which also changed our health benefits and those costs that go in there. So that had to be updated. And then as well as, we saw a very large increase in our utilities. So gas, electric, water, a lot of those, all those extra things that we still, insurance is another big one that the market is really changing on those. And we're still kind of monitoring that as seeing if that is a continued trend or a one-time spike and kind of how that would affect our future planning as well. So in general, the revenues are short, or less than expenditures, and that 315,000. And that's at this time where I feel, I feel confident that it will probably be even less by the time the year end kind of comes. I left all, a lot of material budgets and things still high because we're at that point where we're trying to plan out the rest of the year and things still get used and spent. So I think that there's some space to move and get closer to actually a break-even point for the year. As well as, there's always more funding coming through in COVID kind of things that we continue to talk about and kind of keep up with those complexities because it seems to change by the day. So. This is where we are now. And I'd be happy to take any questions as well.
Any questions or comments for Miranda? All right. Thank you very much. Thank you. Moving to vote, please. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries seven zero. Action item D, please. I'd like to entertain a motion to support the resolution in support of the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act Full Funding Act, as presented by Superintendent Lott. So moved. Jenny, thank you.
Support McVeigh.
Michael, thank you. Discussion?
Yeah, so it's in, it's in your packet, a resolution. This is being brought forward by mainly Naomi Norman and the W I S D asking districts and superintendents to go forward to their board to more or less show support for, this is down towards the bottom of the, of the document, but it talks about strengthening the federal investment in special education by authorizing a 10-year plan to fully fund the federal share of I D E A. And largely, that's the Individuals with Disability Education Act. And it would provide districts with resources needed to ensure that all children and youth with disabilities receive a free and appropriate public education, unlocking the full potential of the law. The I D E A Full Funding Act, it's a critical first step. And the most significant thing that Congress can do to honor their commitment to support not only students with disabilities, but all students in K-12 schools. So that's more or less what this is doing. And it's asking each Board of Education in the county to support it. I, I support it and would hope that you would too.
So question about where, would it be sent to the IS, back to the ISD? I know we've did resolutions where we've sent it to like the governor or things like that.
Yeah, this one basically, actually it's going back to Sherry Van Ader at the, at the ISD that she asked after we had, you know, hopefully passed the resolution that it would go back to her at the W I S D, who works in concert with Naomi.
In our legislative coffee, the last time, there was discussion about this, the, the action going on at the federal level. And apparently we are shuffling closer and closer each year to full funding to, yeah, so, oh. Oh, I thought you were pointing at something. So I'm, yeah, I, I think every little bit we can put forward will, will help. So I'm in support of this.
All right, seeing no other questions or comments, we'll move to vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries seven zero. Moving on to our discussion items, Treasurer Gerbi, finance committee update.
Sure. I can be pretty brief because we already hit on some of it. So the, we, today, we, the finance committee, but today, we vetted the InformaCast system with Mr. Grossman's assistance. And I appreciate that. We talked about the budget amendment that we, we just approved. And, you know, we are continuously having conversations, as we talked about, with regards to structure and future planning for students and what have you. And, and so that's that. You know, going up to the M A S B like winter conference, the prediction is, the prediction is, you know, a seven to eight percent increase, which is similar to what we saw this year. However, I'm also going to say that is not realized, right? As Mr., you know, as Assistant Superintendent Owesley pointed out, like, this stuff is all kind of, Owesley, it kind of, it, it, it moves around a lot. And then there are a lot of different funds and a lot of different, you know, where whether it's Essor money and all those kinds of things. So we just want to be continuously mindful of structure. We want to be continuously mindful of, of how we're doing things. And it sounded like earlier, as Superintendent Lott spoke to, where we are doing that. We are being intentional about it. So that's the update.
Thanks, Brad. Any other questions or comments from the group? All right. Some folks stole your thunder tonight, Brad. I'm kidding. I'm kidding. All right, excellent. As we noted earlier, item B was removed from the agenda. So we'll move to administration updates. Dr. Lott?
Okay, I have three short ones tonight. I do want to thank everybody, the students and the staff, the community for doing a nice job with the masking, no masking that we're seeing in the buildings and, you know, in this room. That, that's, that's going to be part of, of what we're, what we're doing moving forward. And I think it has been good to watch people doing what they're most comfortable in this environment. Again, we talk about following the Washtenaw County Health Department. If something changes, we will, we will look to follow that guidance too. But we want to, we want to just reiterate that we, we thank the community, students and staff for doing a really good job working together with the concept of masking and not masking. Also want to thank Trish Fair and the entire Special Education Department on the polar plunge today. It was an incredible event. They sought to raise $20,000 for Special Olympics and raised $24,000. So it was really, really a great effort. I also do want to point out that, you know, we continue to be saddened by watching what's happening to the people of Ukraine. I know that all the superintendents and discussion are in full support of the Ukraine people. And they're providing our thoughts and our prayers and hopefully resources to continue to help them throughout the ongoing struggle and war that they're experiencing right now.
Thank you very much. Julianne, would you like to go next?
Um, so to start off with the masking in the high school, there are plenty of students who have decided to wear masks and plenty of students who have decided not to. So far in all of my classes, it has not been a problem. And, you know, in the hallways and such, I, I haven't seen too many, I haven't seen any conflicts. But again, I always run into having trouble speaking in general, general terms, because my experience is my experience. And, you know, people don't report issues to me. So again, I'm generally speaking, but, you know, I, I have friends who wear masks, I have friends who don't. And again, it's in school, despite what conflicts may seem in the community. It's, it's generally a peaceful place. So everybody's, again, we're all happy to be in school regardless. Whatever we can do to stay in school and be in school is great because and generally, people don't want to be online, I'd, I'd hope. So that's that. And then going on to my main part of the update, winter sports are coming to an end and we're transitioning to spring sports. So a couple of records, a couple of season records, girls basketball finished 17-6. And unfortunately, they were eliminated from playoffs. The hockey team finished 16-8-1. And I believe we are SEC red champions, which is the first time in a while. So that feels good. And then wrestling, we had Brett Thornell. We saw him before. He had 100 career wins. And then at states, he finished sixth. I'm not too familiar with the wrestling, so I don't know how it really works with weight classes. But he is, he's an all-state wrestler. So congrats Brett Thornell. And then, I mean, the whole school is looking forward to the transition to spring sports.
Thank you, Buggy. Now, now that we all know the nickname, right? After, after we saw the post from the hockey team. We'll have to get an explanation for that one day. Trustee, any, any trustee comments tonight? Yeah, Jenny?
So I wanted to add on, I'm not sure, Julianne, you might want to, might want to ask about this, but I thought I saw in social media that there was another state champion, that one of our female wrestlers won. Do you have her name, Susan? Oh. Okay. Emmy, yes. I think so. But I'd, I'd love for us to maybe include her and comment next time too. So she.
Yeah, I just picked it up from the Celine post.
Great, okay.
But otherwise, yeah, I didn't hear about that. So it's great.
I just happened to see it on social media and I thought that was really cool. Yeah. I think a sophomore, maybe? Emmy Hicks. There you go. Congratulations to Emmy Hicks.
And then there was, there was another one that got second, right?
We could, maybe we can report on it next time too. I just wanted to recognize, like, there are a few, yeah. So.
Now I'm curious to know.
Yeah. So, so maybe we can get that information. Okay. Well, congratulations to our wrestlers. I think that's pretty impressive to have such a well-developed program. I wanted to also mention that our divers and swimmers are headed to state this, this, this weekend and wish them all the luck in their state meet. This week is, or this month, sorry, is March's reading month. And I know that a number of schools are celebrating in a variety of ways. And I know that many of the trustees participated, trustees and administrators, I know Dr. Lott did too, in the Heritage One School One Book Project. And so they are reading the book, Front Desk, which is one of my favorite books. Kelly Yang is the author. So I'm excited to hear students experiencing that story. It is a somewhat semi-autobiographical story and a really great one if you haven't read it yet. I also wanted to mention that I was delighted to hear about the polar plunge as Dr. Lott was sharing and that it came on the heels of Inclusion Week and just the intentionality that a lot of staff put, staff and student groups put forward around. that a lot of staff put, staff and student groups put forward around inclusivity, especially highlighting areas of where inclusion is important in our schools. I wanted to mention, just for clarity, because I realize that I didn't mention this, but I mentioned earlier that I didn't like to use the term close the gap. And some people might be wondering, like, why don't you like to use that? And I think for me, especially in the area of literacy and in education, we assess students and we take them where they are and we help them to achieve their greatest potential. And when we talk in terms of deficit or when we're not talking about strength-based or asset-based, it changes the mindset, like, me personally as an educator, it changes my mindset. So when I'm thinking about an individual student and where they might be and not putting on necessarily a negative connotation, I feel like that's important. And I know that it's important to our teaching and learning team, too. I wanted to explain that a little bit. And finally, I guess two things, so not finally yet. I've been hearing from a lot of people about the bond renewal. I just want to say that I know finance has been talking about it. I know that there have been some, some sessions where different, different groups have been meeting with Anna and David Raft and Dr. Latch. And so, you know, we're continuing, those plans are continuing to develop and we appreciate the community and their involvement. And we're continuing to be open to hearing about your thoughts on that. And I think that in thinking about potential bond renewal projects, in my mind at least, it's really not about an either/or, it's about a both and. So how can we, again, like the whole child, how can we, how can we maximize potential for the whole child and in our, in this case, the whole district, each child? And finally, because we were talking about some of the transitions, I spent, well, my family spent part of the day today at the pediatrician's office. So just a note that there are other repercussions from coming out of a pandemic and exposure to things. So continue to, as I am with my kids, reminding them to wash their hands and be mindful of those things. There are typical viruses that are going around, but from what we heard at the pediatrician's office today, they are, they're having an increase right now because of change in season and, and all of those different variables. So while our COVID threat level is lower and we're really glad to be moving in the right direction in terms of that, keeping all of those things that we've learned throughout the last two years to keep students healthy and being mindful of that, which is the reason I'm wearing my mask tonight, just out of precaution. So onward.
So I want to back, piggyback on something there that Jenny, trustee Miller brought up and about, yeah, those conversations are really important as far as bond renewal and what have you. This is an evolving process. It is something that we are talking about Finance Committee and what have you. We just, we don't have anything concrete, right? So we're allowing that work to happen, but it is happening. It's a, it's a whole process. And I like what you said about it's an and and, or that's our goal, right? And then we're going to talk to our community about what, what the community will, you know, support and what have you. I have two, two more shout outs I want to do. So the first one is cheerleading. So our cheerleading squad made it to Troy Athens for regionals last weekend, and that was a huge deal for them. So I wanted to give them a shout out to that. And I'm especially giving a shout out because I helped carry a kayak around Celine a couple of last week for, they were having Spirit Week. And so I must have looked a little silly driving a kayak around my truck in the middle of February, but that's okay. It was worth it for, for those students. And then the last thing is, I read a great article, too, about a Mason Freeman. And this is a student, nineteen-year-old student with a cognitive impairment. And last Thursday, got into a basketball game and scored a goal, you know? And when I think about like students and the incredible things that are, you know, people do for our students, I want to give a shout out to that coaching staff. I want to give a shout out to that student and the family and for being engaged as a team trainer and wanting to be a part of that, like, oh, that warms my heart. Like, as a teacher, as a, as just a human being. So anyway, so I wanted to give a shout out to that. Thanks.
Thanks. Any other trustee comments?
Yes.
Okay.
A few things. First of all, thank you to everybody on this table who was at Holly Haveland's Threat Assessment Protocol Overview. Washtenaw County Sheriff's Office was also there. That was, that was very interesting. I've got notes and notes and notes and, well, we won't go into it right now, but I want to thank you all. Brad, sorry, Treasurer Gerby and I spent Saturday morning together virtually at one of the CBA courses, and I know we have others on the board read at some of those courses. I took, and now you're going to make, it's going to make me sound horrible, I took three more after that, including the anatomy of an audit, which is on the agenda, and generational diversity, among other things. And I just wanted to remind this board, and I'm looking at the new folks, if we can get every one of us to have covered all the nine 100-level courses by July 1st, then we will be known as an honor board, honor-certified board. No pressure, no pressure, but, and of course, they're all, they're all available online now. I would like to report, we got some emails this afternoon, that there has been progress on the reduced speed area outside Heritage, Woodland Meadows. And they're going to be moving very quickly now that the weather's warmed up. The engineers just finished the other day reviewing the signage in the area. I also wanted to thank Jay Grossman, Robin Schmidt. They gave me a tour of the touchscreens that are around the schools. Quite remarkable, those things. In fact, to the point that some teachers are asking that they remove the digital projectors in the ceiling because these things have just replaced what the digital projectors can do in a lot of different ways. In fact, I'm asking my, my folks at Eastern Michigan University, could I pretty please have one? Yeah, well, we'll see. Secondly, and almost lastly, just March 10th, which is what, Thursday, we're having a social emotional learning event, which you've heard about, Valencia Cade and Sarah Giddings from WISD, they will be doing this presentation. Apparently, they knocked it out of the park a few weeks ago and are delighted to run it for us, for board members, trustees across Washtenaw. And finally, I did hear from Guillermo Lopez, the Region Seven MASB Board of Directors winner. Hey, I was six districts away out of seventy-three from, from, I gave him a run for his money, let's put it that way. And he's well-respected and much beloved, but if it comes up again and I'm still here, I'll give it, I'll give it another shot. Thank you very much for your support.
Any other trustees comments? Okay, I have a few. First of all, I wanted to thank the board and Steve for attending the board retreat. And I wanted to really also thank the culinary students and staff at the high school who put on a wonderful little spread for us, had a little team-building dessert activity before we went on and did other team-building activities on decision-making and had a small design thinking activity on Board of Education focus. We enjoyed their food very much and got to use some torches for our little lemon meringue tarts, which was very, very fun. Looking forward to continued discussions on some of the focal points that came out of that activity, which include in no particular order, because they're all important, diversity of thought, our students, the community, the Board of Education and superintendent relationship, efficient meetings, and being a team. So good, good focal points there. Also attended the MASB Winter Institute, I think it was last weekend, they all run together, online. I really enjoyed one of the sessions on school safety where a mother from Sandy Hook was the presenter, which was, which was hard to hear but very important to hear. And spent all day Sunday at the Advanced Board of Education President Workshop, talking about engaging our community, being a spokesperson, election your things to watch out for, and behavioral styles analysis that we all completed. Also attended the Foundation for Celine Area Schools monthly meeting. Pleased to say three more grants were approved, one at Woodland Meadows and two at our high school. They are getting ready for their huge spring event and imagine it will be April 28th at, I think, 6:00 PM. Please look for information coming soon. There will, there will be a movie, a live auction, a silent auction, and food from Knights that evening. Thank you to our foundation also for the goodwill campaign that is occurring in all of our buildings right now. They are leveraging the partnerships that we have with wonderful local businesses and buying services and goods from those businesses and then giving those back to staff. So there's raffling off of Max gift cards, there's a flower bouquet I saw at the front office here. There's been a lot of Imagine popcorn, there's been scones, all sorts of things. So thank you for that. And also wanted to compliment Julianne on a shout out that he got from one of the trustees this morning. She mentioned that she was watching the, she's an alum of Celine Area Schools, and she mentioned that she was watching the video and she was very impressed with, with your representation of the student body and your participation in the conversation about masks. So good work, good work there. Brad already mentioned finance. Celine Robotics, I did want to say something about that. We received a bulletin. There will be forty teams and fourteen hundred students at Celine High School soon. They would love for you to attend. It is March 26th and 27th, so look for information that I'm sure will be in news and notes and things like that very soon. Thank you. Yeah.
I would like to go.
Okay.
So I wanted to say the name of the two girls, the wrestlers. So Emmy Hicks and then T. Isman, Tia Isman. And for Women's History Month and, so this was the first official MHSAA Girls State Championship. So super exciting. And so, yes, they were, took second and then Emmy won. And they, wrestling holds a special place in my heart because in elementary school, I was like one of like, one wrestlers in elementary school. So they did kind of like a clinic and, you know, a couple weekend competitions. So I think there was like one girl, another girl who wrestled, and I was scared of her. And then a lot of times, the boys would forfeit because they were scared of me. Oh, and then, oh, nope, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, moving forward to our consent agenda, please.
I want pictures.
For our consent agenda, the following are offered as part of the consent agenda. The motion noted will allow for the authorization of all listed items without discussion unless a member of the board requests that any one or all be considered individually. Item A, approval of the Board of Education regular meeting minutes of February 22nd, 2022. B, approval of the Board Policy Committee meeting minutes of February 22nd, 2022. C, approval of the Board of Education Retreat Meeting Minutes of February 28th, 2022. C, approval of payment of the General Fund Accounts Payable of March 8th, 2022 in the amount of $4,579,039.78. D, approval of payment of the Bond Series Three Accounts Payable of March 8th, 2022 in the amount of $13,608.40. E, receive and file Curriculum, Finance, and Human Resources Reports. F, the approval of overnight and or out-of-state field trips as submitted by Superintendent Latch. Field Trip 2021, Number 87, Skills USA Competition, Grand Rapids, Michigan, from April 8th to April 10th, 2022. And G, approval of early graduation requests as submitted by Superintendent Latch. I'd like to please entertain a motion to authorize the consent agenda.
Motion, Gerby.
Brad, thank you.
Support, Jones. Oh, go ahead, Jones.
All right, Candace, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries seven zero. In closing, items scheduled for our next agenda.
South and West Washtenaw Consortium Update with Dr. Ryan Rowe.
Ask him to bring some of those lemon tarts or the crab cakes. Or tomato soup. Okay, we're looking forward to that. Betty is approaching, so that means we have one other public comment. A member of the public may address the board briefly for up to three minutes or request to be scheduled on the agenda of a future meeting. I have two, seeing no student forms, I have two community members who would like to speak. The first received was Dave Rosenfeld, resident and former SAS parent.
Hi, my name's Dave and my pronouns are he, him, his. So back in November of 2018, I sat in this very room to attend one of the early community conversations on diversity that was hosted by former Superintendent Scott Graden. And that was possibly the first time I had ever really engaged with Celine Area Schools beyond just volunteering in my kids' classrooms or helping my partner Viva, who's here tonight, with some of the many things that she was doing to support the students and staff at Woodland Meadows. But a community conversation with the superintendent was something new and different for me. And I definitely never attended a Board of Education meeting before. But now, three and a half years later, I have participated in more listening sessions and community conversations than I can remember. And as you know, as you all know, I've attended my fair share of board meetings as well. So this sort of thing is no longer new to me. But the reason, the main reason I bring up that first community conversation back in 2018 is because at that meeting, which was convened in response to a racist incident that had occurred at one of the schools, one of the participants suggested that what the district really needed was a full-time, paid position dedicated solely to DEI. And the consensus in the room was overwhelmingly, if not unanimously, in favor of the idea. I remember asking the admin who were present if that was something the district would likely get behind. And while I don't remember the exact response, I think it was something like, yes, in principle, but we'd have to look at finances, et cetera, and it may not be entirely necessary if we make sure we have staff in each building that are versed in DEI and so on. Well, here we are, three and a half years, and Lord knows, excuse me, how many racist incidents and listening sessions later. And while progress has been made in certain areas, we still don't have a full-time, paid DEI position. I strongly concur with the DEIAC and with Celine Parents Against Racism that creating such a position is one thing our district can do and, in my opinion, desperately needs to do to help address and ultimately to solve this pervasive, ongoing, and unacceptable problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Kevin Camero-Sulak, parent and parent of a student and 2019 alumni, very specific. Whenever you're ready, Kevin.
Very true. Thank you. Thank you for, thank you for listening and all, all your work on this. There's been a lot of consideration with, with these issues of racism, discrimination, harassment, abuse. It's becoming all too common, and I dislike saying that. But I emphatically support the district, I'm sorry, Celine Area Schools hiring a full-time diversity, equity, and inclusion staff member. I've been an active parent in the schools and, as you stated, I still have a student in the school district and a 2019 alum. And she hears what's, what's going on. She wants to make a difference, but it doesn't seem like much has changed from what herself and other student friends, you know, are hearing at school or when, or when they come back. I'm sure that translates to our reputation more than just in Celine. So I truly believe that this position would benefit not only our, our students of color and marginalized communities, but all of our students. Remember, this, nobody's getting a smaller piece of the pie, the pie is getting, the pie is getting bigger and it's, and it's more equitable. As, as said earlier, we need someone that will coordinate and will be the holder of all the information and the events and organize how this is going to be addressed. We need somebody that's accountable for following through with- We need somebody that's accountable for following through with consistencies of policies, making, you know, suggestions for adjustments. And we need to keep all of our students safe. As Spar and the DEI LC eloquently stated earlier, we've seen some fruits of our efforts, but in order to implement and realize major improvements in all of our students' safety and ability to learn, a dedicated DEI staff member is necessary. As, as a City of Celine Council member, I've seen significant improvements from the creation of the city's DEI committee and the implementation of several initiatives. So I'm very confident that hiring a full-time DEI person will help all Celine students and yield benefits to the community. Celine sees itself as a leader in the county and in the state, primarily in athletics, academics, music, many of our excellent clubs and organization.
Kevin, you're-
I'll wrap it up.
Okay.
Now the time, now is the time to elevate our students' safety and ability to learn. We can't wait for another racist or, or abuse of our students. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you can toggle that off, the, the mic, we're going to be gone. Now I'd like to please, oh, I'm sorry, the next meeting, the next regular Board of Education meeting will be held on March 22nd, 2022 at 6:30 PM. I'd like to please entertain a motion to adjourn the Board of Education meeting for March 8th, 2022 at 9:42 PM. McFay, thank you. Second?
Second, Miller.
Miller, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed? Hearing none, motion carries 7-0. We are adjourned 7, 9:42.